This meeting of the Bloomington Common Council to order here on October 22nd. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Pete Motz Smith?
Here.
Stasburg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. As some of you know, one of the things I like to do to start off our meetings is to give a little bit of interesting information, often related to some sort of justice or equity issue, usually something that applies locally. And so today, I wanted to start off by talking about Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That is why we are all up here having some sort of purple on, as well as our staff and the clerk. And so thank everybody for playing along with the purple game tonight for me. Domestic Violence Awareness Month began in 1981 as a way to unite those across the nation who were working to end domestic violence and support survivors of domestic violence. And so tonight, I wanted to highlight a few local statistics related to domestic violence and remind our community of some related resources. So from the first, from the Bloomington Police Department's State of Public Safety in 2025 presentation, during the year 2024, there were a total of 370 reported criminal incidents in the domestic battery crime category. And this was actually a decrease of about 5% from 2023. So maybe we're trending in the right direction, which would be great. However, domestic violence is certainly under-reported as a general rule. And this is kind of demonstrated by the service numbers that one of our great local resource, resources for domestic violence, Middleway House provided me with. So Middleway House is a local organization that supports victims of domestic violence, and they've been supporting survivors in our community with housing and other resources since 1970. So they provided me with these 2024 numbers reflecting their service to our community. And I do want to note, Middleway House does, they have a service area that includes Bloomington and Monroe County, but also includes some adjacent counties as well. So they had 5,699 survivor calls to their hotline. They had 516 legal advocacy clients, and they filed 172 protective orders with their assistance. There were 125 adults and 103 children housed in their emergency shelter during 2024. They had 32 families that they served at The Rise, which is a residential program for those transitioning out of violent relationships. So those are the numbers that I wanted to share and just say that it's really wonderful to have an organization like Middleway giving support to the members of our community who need that assistance transitioning out of violent domestic situations. And if you are in an unsafe domestic situation, you can of course call the Bloomington Police Department or 911, and you can also reach out to the crisis hotline for Middleway at So I'm glad that we have that resource in our community. Now I'll move on to our agenda summation for this evening's meeting. We will start with minutes for approval. We have three sets of minutes to approve from March 5th, April 30th, and May 7th, all of this year. After minutes, we will have reports of, we will have a section for reports, sorry. First, we will have reports from councilmembers. Then we will have the mayor and city offices report, where we will have a report tonight from the Bloomington Monroe County Metropolitan Planning Organization. Then we will have council committee reports, and I'm not aware of any of those this evening. And then we will have our first segment of reports from the public. So that is a time, if you are a member of the public who would like to report on an item not on the agenda, that is a time for you to give a three-minute comment. There are no appointments to boards and commissions tonight. We have one piece of legislation for first reading, which is ordinance 202542, amending Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code related to the Order of Business at Regular Sessions for this meeting. And then we will move on to second readings and resolutions. We will start with ordinance 202538, fixing the salaries of officers and employees of the police and fire departments. We will then move on to ordinance 202539, fixing the salaries of the Office of the City Clerk for the City of Bloomington. And then we will have ordinance 202540 to fix the salaries of officers, non-union and AFSMI employees for all the departments in the city, or all other departments than the two previous ordinances. Then we'll have resolution 202518 approving the naming of the Stadium District. And then we will end with ordinance 202532, amending Title II with regard to urban agriculture. Urban agriculture commercial, sorry. That will wrap up our legislation for the evening. We will have an additional period of public comment for anybody wanting to speak on items not on the agenda. And if you want to speak to something not on the agenda, you have to choose one of those two periods of time. You can't speak at both of them. Any notes about council schedule, and then we will adjourn. So we can start for the minutes, and I do want to note to councilmembers that two slightly revised sets of minutes were just sent out moments ago from the clerk from meetings from March 5th and meetings from May 7th were very slightly revised.
I move to approve the minutes from March 5th, 2025, April 30th, 2025, and May 7th, 2025.
Second.
Are there questions from councilmembers? Since we're all actually here in person tonight, we can do a voice vote. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to reports, first reports from councilmember. I'll go ahead and start to my left with councilmember Daley.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes, thank you. Council attorney Lainer, would you please put up the letter on the screen? Thank you. So in short, I prepared a short letter opposing the purchase of, the county's purchase of the North Park location for the new jail. That is very necessary to be built. In short, the location is outside of city limits with little to no plans for public transportation, and I believe that this location will prevent a lot of our city residents from being able to get to hearings at the Justice Center and really just make the criminal justice system, which is already difficult to navigate, even harder. Furthermore, our downtown businesses rely on revenue generated from the foot traffic, from visitors and employees at the Justice Center, especially during the work week. As many of you know, our downtown businesses already struggle with the Monday through Thursday crowd for business, and so I would, I would hate to see them take any more hits. So in short, the letter is up on the screen. I believe it went out around 4:00 PM today, and I would really appreciate it if we could vote to send this to our county counterparts. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So Sidney has written this letter and is interested in as many councilmembers as possible signing onto it?
Yes.
Do councilmembers have any comments? Councilmember Pete Motz Smith?
Yeah, I'm in support of the letter. I have other reasons that I also would add to opposition to purchase of North Park, but I think this covers two important reasons. Thank you.
Other comments or questions for councilmembers? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I'm also in support. I was going to say, I too had just one other thought. I don't know, are we voting on this tonight? Or is that the plan? Okay, great. I was just going to say, I don't think it mentions people visiting their, visiting people in. It does, does it say that? Oh, okay. And that, I think, is just another reason that it's so important to have it on public transit, so that people can visit their people in jail. Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions for councilmember Zulik? Councilmember Daley?
Thank you. I just want to thank councilmember Zulik for writing this. I agree with the reasoning laid out and what councilmember Rosenbarger said, too. It was a, my initial reaction to hearing about the change in location was exactly that, that it's difficult to get to your loved ones then when you need to go visit. So for all of those reasons, I will be supporting the letter. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I, I will go ahead and take a comment then. I'm supportive of the content of the letter, but I'm not sure that it, I think, I feel like it leaves things out, too, including the visiting. I also think that it leaves out the issue of financing, which I think is also really huge. Right now, the way that it's been explained to me, the county doesn't actually have the money to actually do the project that they're planning on doing. And I also think that location puts our BPD officers in a really challenging situation because, I mean, they, Bloomington is so big. They use the jail significantly in terms of booking people in, and they would have to go all the way out to North Park to book people in, and then all the way back to wherever it is that they're stationed in terms of the region that they're patrolling. And I think that that just leaves those officers kind of out of circulation for too long in terms of serving. So I'm supportive of what's in the letter, but I don't feel like the letter actually says as much as maybe I would want it to say. And given the time crunch, like, I don't want to put my name on this because I think that it, that it leaves out too much. And, but I know that, like, we're kind of limited in, like, how much we could edit it tonight. So I guess I would prefer then to have the, you know, as many people want to sign it and as many names on it as people want to go on it, but not necessarily have it from the entire body, just because it does leave stuff out.
So I hear what you're saying, and I, there are other things that I would have liked to include in the letter. I really wanted to focus on the city as a stakeholder and how it would specifically impact the city, if that makes sense. And now, I do hear your point about BPD. I was trying to keep this to a page and just communicate two of the most pressing issues, but I would still like to vote on this as a council, to send it.
Okay. I guess I feel like it would be almost a worse, like, I would have to vote, vote no that I didn't support it because I don't want to put my name on it. So I almost feel like that would be, that would look worse overall than just having individual names signed on it to say that there was a dissenting vote on this. Does that make any sense to anybody besides me? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I'm a big fan nowadays of, it's good enough to go, and I think that the point is to get something out ASAP. I'm okay for, well, I guess I would say it's your choice. If everyone wants to vote, it's your choice to vote no, of course. And then it would be eight, potentially eight of nine people who are in support of this, and I'm happy to say I'm in support of this, and I have other reasons as well. I don't think this is like the end of my perspective, you know? And I feel fine about that, I guess.
Councilmember Pete Motz Smith?
Yeah, just an idea that may work for other councilmembers as well. I, I would vote for this letter. I sent the commissioners and my county council representatives a more detailed email last week noting not only the location, but the proposed size, the lack of concurrent investment in prevention, and the lack of a funding mechanism. So I think, since I've already sent that, this will just be in addition, so that they know that I have more issues than just the ones in this particular letter. So that's a tactic that other councilmembers could, could use as well, just send their own letter in addition. But I think it is timely because October 28th, I believe, is when the commissioners will go to county council and ask for funds to make the purchase.
Other councilmember comments? I guess I, I feel like we wrote a similar letter last year, and of course, we didn't, there was a letter written last year that was about, I think, the IU protests, and not all of us signed our names onto it, and that was okay. And so I don't know why this one would have to be a vote, and then it would have the entire council name on this letter when we did a letter a different way last time. Councilmember, sorry.
I think we might be splitting hairs a bit. Like, I don't, I think I'm quite okay with us just, I mean, not making it official votes because I don't even know what the motion is. Like, motion would be for us to, for the clerk to send it. Like, what are we, because we can just sign it, right? I mean, there's nothing keeping us from signing it, right?
Yeah.
So let's just, how about, how about we just do that?
Just going off of what we did last time with the EPA letter. So from my standpoint, that was where I was approaching it, from consistency.
Yeah, and I guess between that example and the IU example from last year, maybe we don't have consistency over how we do this. So do you just want to print, print that letter off, maybe before, maybe? Oh, that's true. Is it going to be a physical send, councilmember Zulik, or an electronic send? Or both? I don't think there's a usually. Because if we do an electronic send, then people can just, like, is there anybody besides me who doesn't want to put their name on it? I don't see any hands, so. Does that work for your purposes right now?
That's fine. I think it would be stronger to vote on it and send it as a council, but that's fine.
Well, do you want to, do you want to move to do that, then?
Yes, I move to, as a council, send this letter to the Monroe County Council and the Monroe County Commissioners, both physical and electronic copies.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to, and then, so would, so right now the letter is from you, so would you be the one that signs it? It does say City of Bloomington Common Council, and then Sidney's the councilmember. So does that?
I think we can add all of the councilmembers in a list, and I guess it will go to two pages.
Okay.
I, I don't understand what the issue is.
Well, we're voting on the letter as it is, so do you, do you mean to amend the letter and have everybody's name on it? And so is that the motion? Okay, great. So are there any other questions or comments on this? Okay, so let's do a roll call vote on sending the letter.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Motz Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
I'll say yes to sending it, but I don't want my name on it.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that was, we were still in the middle of reports from councilmembers. So now we have councilmember Rosenbarger.
Hi, great, yes, thanks. I have a little report. Okay. I wanted to start, what is the phrase? I don't know, love the player, hate the game? Is that it? Is that right? Oh, don't hate the player, hate the game. I want to start with that and say that I do appreciate the players in this report. Okay, so I reported on this property back in 2001, 2021. It is 601 West Fourth Street. It's in Prospect Hill. It is one block off of Rogers Street. So April 2021, 601 West Fourth Street was a triplex, and it sold for $295,000. That is roughly $100,000 per unit. It is a historic home, of course. It's protected. Today, two and a half years later, the triplex has been converted to a single-family home, two-bedroom, two-bath, 1,700 square feet, and is listed for sale at $559,000. So this, this triplex conversion removed three incredibly affordable homes from our community, very walkable, and a triplex cannot legally be built in Prospect Hill right now to replace that. So again, not hating the players, I'm happy for them and the work they did on this house. Of course, the outside of the house looks exactly the same, still the same paint, everything like that, but the inside is very different. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari?
Thank you. Just a quick update that last week Canopy Bloomington held the first of three plantings that they're doing across the city, I think mostly on the near west side, and had the pleasure of joining them, as many of my colleagues have done in the past, and we were left with the charge to tell you all of the upcoming planting. So this Saturday, starting, I have to verify the time, I think it starts at 11:00 at Butler Park, there'll be another opportunity to volunteer. I, I say this a lot, both, both here and if, if we ever talked, if we've ever talked personally, that, you know, I think we have this sort of disparity in Bloomington between our willingness to serve our community and our knowing that things are happening in the community and opportunities to serve. So hopefully, many of you will be able to show up for that. It's totally free, and there's pizza, et cetera, that follows, so a great opportunity. Now, I usually don't use my comments to reflect on sort of broader national things or to reflect on sort of political moments, because we had said that we would mostly use our comment times to update each other on what we've been doing, but our norm tends to be that we do update on sort of our reflections on broader things. And, and so I, I was thinking, as we were planting this week, I mean, how metaphorical it is to the state of our institutions of civic governance, and primarily through the lens of the fact that it is so much easier to tear things down than it is to plant and to build them. I remember when, it was probably his 87th birthday, the incomparable Lee Hamilton, I was asking him about his thoughts about, you know, the current state of affairs. This was, you know, six years ago or so, or eight, eight years ago. And, and his response was that what we should all do is trust the strength of our institutions. But I think that what we're seeing in the current moment is the constant eroding of those institutions, and I am fearful for the fact that, you know, academic literature shows that once we, you see a huge decline, a democratic backsliding, that it's very difficult to regain that ground. And we're seeing this across the board, from the federal government shutdown to the National Guard being mobilized against the will of local governments, to elected officials not being sworn in, to literal tearing down of our, of historical parts of our White House, and so on and so forth. To me, it's a really important reflection of the important work that we do as a community and as a local government. And, you know, I, we said throughout, we just, for example, passed our city budget, and though we had some, some things that we might have disagreed on collectively as a body, there was one element that I think people in Bloomington should be happy about, which is that we, through the last 10, 15 years of very good governance, and I'm looking at, you know, my colleagues who have been here for a very long time, you know, some of you who are here in the last century, the, that was a joke about Dave Rallo, but the, the, we, we've put the city in, in a very strong position, and, and I think that it's testament to, to the fact that local government is always where the rubber meets the road on the strength of our institutions. Now, today, we're going to talk about some things that may be contentious, and we, there's a lot of work that we still have to do. But I think that in the midst of the, of the sort of political moment that we're living in with the decline of our institutions across the country, it's so important that we don't lose sight of the fact that what we're doing here is just family business, you know? Like, we disagree, we argue, we make fun of our old uncle, but, but at the end of the day, like, we're committed to providing value to, to the citizen, the residents of Bloomington. And so just again, as we're reflecting on, on planting trees, I hope that many of you will join this week, but also that we recommit to this important work of protecting our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Motz Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to praise the organizers and the participants in the No Kings Rally. This past Saturday in Bloomington, we had over 2,000 people, and as everywhere else in the country, it was a peaceful protest. It was an exercise of our constitutional rights to assembly and to free speech, and I think it went very well. And I also wanted to highlight that it's not just DEI that this federal government is attacking, but it's actually civil rights and civil liberties that were hard-fought in the 1950s and 60s that are being eroded daily, most blatantly in the Department of But in that context, I wanted to highlight our NAACP here in Bloomington Monroe County, which of course is one of the oldest and boldest civil rights organizations in this country, and they do have their Freedom Fund banquet coming up on Saturday, November 1st at 6:00 PM at Ivy Tech. And if you'd like to learn more or get tickets for this event, you can go to givebutter.com/mcnaacp2025. The theme is "The Fierce Urgency of Now," which of course is from Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech, 1963. And the funds raised will go towards scholarships and to continue the work in fighting for civil rights in our community. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Technically, there's 20 minutes set aside for councilmember reports, and we've met that, so I'm going to go ahead and extend us until, councilmembers Rallo, Ruff, and Flaherty, do you guys have reports? Okay, I'll, I'll extend it until 7:00 for now, and I'll extend it again if we have to. So councilmember Rallo? Councilmember Ruff?
Just real quick, I want to apologize to anyone who attempted to zoom in on councilmember Rallo in my constituent meeting this past Saturday. Due to technical difficulties, we were unable to get the thing launched and hosted and going, but we intend to do that this coming Saturday instead, same time, 10:00 in the morning, and we'll make sure we have the system working at that point. So that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty? Okay. And I just had a, had a short couple of things to say that I'll make shorter now. One is, I also wanted to announce my constituent meeting, which, as you guys may or may not remember, I've been having to shift those around some during the fall because of cross-country season, but this Saturday, I will have a constituent meeting here next door at, from 11:00 to noon. And I've also been kind of regularly outside at the farmer's market during the summer, but I think it's going to be a little bit chilly for that on Friday, so I'm going to move us back inside. So if anybody wants to come to that, that's next door, McCloskey, at 11:00. And then for my colleagues, there was a form sent out for suggestions around deliberation session topics, specifically noting that the December 10 deliberation session currently has no topic. So if anybody has a suggestion, they want to make a commitment to organize that particular meeting, please respond to that form by October 31st. Otherwise, I think that we're, we just discussed with staff the idea of canceling that meeting. So if you have a topic for that deliberation session, please let me know. And in the interest of time, I will call that my report. So moving on to the mayor and city offices, the Bloomington Monroe County MPO. If you want to make sure to introduce yourself for the record. And as a reminder, there is 20 minutes set aside for this session, and hopefully at least half or more of that time will be councilmember questions.
Hi, everyone. My name is Katie Gandhi. Myself and Pat Martin here are the current staff for the Bloomington Monroe County Metropolitan Planning Organization. And as a quick reminder, each year, our MPO receives federal funding from the Federal Highway Administration to distribute to our local public agencies for multimodal transportation projects within the metropolitan planning area. The metropolitan planning area includes the current urbanized area of Monroe County, as well as additional areas expected to become urbanized in the next 20 years. As you requested, today we'll summarize the federal funding that MPO has distributed to local public agencies over the last seven years, which projects receive those funds, what future projects are slated to receive funding through the MPO, and some of the what future projects are slated to receive funding through the MPO, and some of the upcoming indot-funded projects planned for our county in the next five years. This chart shows the quantity of federal highway funds the MPO distributed to local public agencies from federal fiscal year 2018 to 2025, and what we anticipate distributing to the LPAs in the next five years. On average, the MPO is authorized to distribute about 4.6 million to local LPAs through specific, although the specific annual amounts can vary due to a number of factors. These annual totals do not include federal highway funding that city departments receive independently through grants and special funding calls. These totals strictly reflect what is apportioned to the MPO each year based on federal and state formulas. Also, I will say that on my chart, fiscal year 2027 is a bit misleading, while the MPO is slated to receive 4.6 million in federal funds that year, almost all of that will go toward repaying a loan from fiscal year '24, which helped the city acquire extra money to finish the first street project. So in the last eight years, 25 local projects have received federal funds through the MPO. Several of those projects included multiple phases and/or were funded multiple years. 21 out of the 25 funded projects included bicycle and pedestrian improvements as part of their scope in the form of curb ramps, signals, sidewalks, trails, and multi-use paths. Oh, sorry, I was supposed to switch the slide. I forgot to do that. I'll give you a second on that. So the next few slides show which projects received federal funds through the MPO in the past eight years and how much they received. Bolded projects include the pedestrian elements. You can see that in fiscal year 2018, four projects received MPO federal funds, all of which included pedestrian improvements. In fiscal year 2019, four projects received federal funds through the MPO, which included City of Bloomington's Second and Bloomfield Pedestrian Improvements and the Jackson Creek Trail and High Street Path Projects. In fiscal year 2020, six projects received federal funds through the MPO, all of which were City of Bloomington projects. Five out of six projects, five out of the six projects that received funding involved the creation of new multi-use paths. In fiscal year '21, four projects received funding. If you notice that this is the fourth year in a row that Jackson Creek Trail and High Street Path received funding, it's because, because of the extra administrative hurdles required when using federal funds, it's more efficient and cost-effective to use federal funds for larger projects that span multiple years. In fiscal year '22, five projects received federal funds through the MPO, which included another new multi-use path and crosswalk upgrades. Transit, another valuable alternative transportation option for this community, also received funding during this fiscal year. In 2023, three projects received funding. The funding granted to Bloomington Transit during this year enabled them to finalize their plans to construct a new facility. In fiscal year '24, due to extra funds received through a funding exchange with the Indy MPO, nine diverse local projects received MPO funding. Most of the funding that year was granted to cities, the cities hopeful for street And finally, in '25, fiscal year 2025, which ended in June '25, seven projects received funds from us. Some of the money in this fiscal year was also given to another MPO, who will repay us that money in a future year, when the money can be of better use to us. Note that none of the projects I just mentioned from the past eight years were fully funded, using only federal funds from the MPO. That's because LPAs have to provide either a 10% or 20% match for any federal funds they receive, and also, MPO funds are typically, are limited, and LPA projects typically cost much more than the MPO can provide. I'll also mention here that not just any project can or should receive federal funds through the MPO. So because the federal funding process can take up to five years, the MPO has to plan out five years in advance how MPO funding will be used. The MPO's Transportation Improvement Plan for fiscal year '26 to '30, which was just published, shows what those projects are that are approved to receive the upcoming MPO funds in the next five years. The College and Walnut Street corridor here, the improvement project, is one of the city's projects that are slated to receive federal funds through the MPO in the next five years. The City of Bloomington is also anticipated to receive funds for Phases III and IV of their Crosswalk Safety Improvement Project, as well as for Phase V of their Downtown Curb Ramp Project. Oops. In the next five years, the city will also receive MPO funds for its High Street Intersection Modernization and Multi-Use Path Project, which I know is a little contentious around here, and that's anticipated to begin construction this coming spring. The city has also been granted federal funds through the MPO for their North Dunn Street Multi-Use Path Project from East Clover Lane to the bypass. And finally, the city's West Second Street Project, which began construction just this last month, or went to Letting, anyway, has been granted federal MPO funds as well. All five of the City of Bloomington projects that are receiving MPO funds in the next five years will result in infrastructure upgrades that will benefit non-drivers. Monroe County Highway Department will also receive some federal funds in the next five years for an intersection upgrade at Old SR 37 South and East Dillon Road. And then if any project scheduling changes, which can happen sometimes because the federal funding process is complicated, allocated MPO funding will either be shifted to benefit any of the projects you see here, be granted to Bloomington Transit, or to exchange with another MPO so that we can have extra funds in the future to spend. There are also a few pedestrian-focused projects planned for our county in the next five years that will be led and funded by the Indiana Department of Transportation. Indot will both coordinate with the city and the county engineering departments and hold public meetings as part of their process. One of the future indot-led projects planned for our region is a reconfiguring of the pedestrian trail bridge over SR 45. Another planned indot project in the next five years is installation of a sidewalk on the SR 45-46 bypass between Kinzer Pike and Walnut Street. And Indot will also complete some accessibility, safety, pedestrian improvements at South Hickory Drive, where South Liberty Drive intersects with West Bloomfield and Second. One of the reasons for this project is the presence of a Bloomington Transit bus stop at that location. And Indot also plans to do road and pedestrian facility work along SR 45 and 10th Street at two locations, if they can maintain the funding for it. First, between the bypass and North Pete Ellis Drive, starting next year, and then later between North Pete Ellis Drive and North Russell Road, which is where University Elementary School is located. And then other indot projects planned for the next five years within this county include structural and bridge projects, pavement and bridge, bridge deck overlays, railroad safety projects, intersection improvement at SR 46 and West Flatwoods Road, which is west of Elletsville. And then Indot has still unassigned discretionary funds that may come to this community as well, and Pat and I will update both the MPO public documents and the committees as those funds come in. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about the MPO with you. Pat and I welcome your questions.
Thank you so much. Are there questions from councilmembers? There are no questions from councilmembers? Councilmember, sorry.
Thank you so much for the presentation. When you're thinking about that five-year horizon and ways that the city particularly is we're thinking about budgeting, as we're thinking about better, you know, aligning budgets with, with clear data, et cetera, how could we better position ourselves to strengthen the MPO's ability to secure federal funding, to, you know, move it in the city, et cetera?
Pat, you want to answer that?
Pat Martin, Bloomington Monroe County Metropolitan Planning Organization. The answer is, we're maxed out now. We've optimized everything as much as we could. We don't select the projects. Projects are selected by the engineering department, recommended by the engineering department, approved by the committees, the various committees and the policy committee, and then approved by Indot and Federal Highway Administration, Federal Transit Administration. This year, this calendar year, I'm sorry, this fiscal year 2026, we're looking to receive about $5.1, $5.2 million, but then we're also at the end of the federal funding bill, and nobody knows what will happen then. That will expire at the end of September of next year, and Congress is yet to take up that legislation. So the, the outlook is a little fuzzy, if I can say that, but we're, I mean, our priority has always been safety, mobility, connectivity, and accessibility, and that's what we're still doing. That answers your question.
Actually, could you, could you say your question one more time?
If I were to rephrase it, it would, it would be, what would you have us do to make your work easier?
Well, I guess it depends on any, any goals you guys might have. So, and I wanted to add on to what Pat said, which is that, you know, the, the city engineering department does, you know, they work off of the priority lists that are set by plans that are made, by studies that are done, by planning, the planning documents that the planning department does. So, you know, they all work together, along with Public Works. A lot of projects don't, you know, the timelines are complicated, because funding is complicated. And so, for example, like Crosswalks Phase III, you know, you have to get it into the tip, or into our documents in 2023, consultant surgeon selected in '24, you know, preliminary engineering goes '24 to '25, right-of-way '25, '26, construction '28. So it's a long process, and from my understanding, the, the city engineering department, you know, has to get approval from the city council to even get the project approved before it gets in our document, and then they have to reapprove construction. By that time, all of you could have changed, so they, they, they depend on bonds to make sure the funding is available in the future. So, I guess, just, you know, if you have strong interests in particular projects, you know, that just learning more about the process of how those projects get into these documents and then get the funding that they get would, would be helpful. So, yeah.
Thank you. Are there other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Hi, thank you so much. And I'm sorry if you said this, I was like staring very closely at this map. North Dunn Street, okay, so that is anticipated construction fiscal year 2028, and it's budgeted for like $500,000 this year, I think. So is that like design, or, I guess, just, I'm just curious as to like what that is? I should have had this document opened.
Yes, so, the North Dunn Street project, it was, is using $100,000 this fiscal year for right-of-way acquisition, and then local funds in '28 for construction engineering and construction, and then will be supplemented by roughly a million of federal funds in '28 for construction.
Okay, so it's prepping for 2028 construction, but then it seems like it will all get done at once, because once you have that right-of-way, it's sort of easier to just get it all, the multi-use path. Okay. That's really neat. Just a note, separate, but the speed limit on that road is 30, and it's such a tiny road and hilly, I just wonder if we can change that, but I know that's not a question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Ms. Gandhi? Okay. I have one question, because one of the things that you mentioned regarding the indot project along 10th Street between the bypass and Pete Ellis was, you said, if they can maintain the funding for it, is that funding in danger right now?
They just have a lot on their plate, and they are constantly prioritizing. So just like we update the tip every two years, the tip is what has all of the future projects planned out on it. We update it every two years, things change in those two years, priorities get shifted sometimes. You know, if, if right-of-way for High Street can't, can't be obtained, you know, then that project might be delayed or canceled or something like that. So they also have a similar document called the STIP, and they readjust their, their funding and priorities. So I know that, that, that particular area is a very strong interest in this community in fixing, particularly because it goes to the University Elementary, and we are, you know, we are on their docket, we are on their list, but, you know, as funds get shifted. So I think, you know, administer, some, some leadership support from the council could definitely, definitely possibly help with securing that funding and preventing it from being shifted.
Great, thank you. Were you specifically talking about the, the like Phase I funding between the bypass and Pete Ellis, or are you more thinking about the Phase II between Pete Ellis and Russell Road? That might be, end up?
Any of it could be.
Okay. Thank you.
Theoretically, what's in the tip, what's planned out for the next two years is secure, but anything beyond that is considered illustrative and not as secure.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for being here, I really appreciate it, we all really appreciate it, and it was a very informative slideshow.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any reports from council committees, so we will move on to our first, first section for public comment. So if there are any members of the public who would like to make a comment on items not on the agenda, now is a time for you to do so, and I already see somebody here in chambers moving to the podium. So if you are in chambers, you can do exactly as this person just did and move to the podium. You can sign in and then state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes. If you are online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab on Zoom, or you can send a chat message to the host. But let's go ahead and start here in chambers, since there is somebody already. Is the timer all set? Great, thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Greg Alexander. I prepared slides, but I was told I can't use them for, thanks, for a bogus accessibility reason. I respect policies, but the council website still says we can use visual aids. Changing the rules without informing the public is disrespectful to my time. You're creating unneeded animosity. Anyways, so I will ask you to imagine sidewalks you can't see. I went to Howe Street in Prospect Hill, and I walked east towards the B-line over about four blocks. I took six photos, the sidewalk being blocked. Mostly it's blocked by vegetation, it's not completely blocked. You've got plants growing into the sidewalk, all sorts of patterns. As a single person walking alone, you can simply slip through. The sidewalk's about five feet wide, and the narrowest gap between the plants was about two feet wide. Sometimes you'll have plants brushing against your body. If you get in the habit of accepting that, you will get poison ivy. It's a problem, but still, as a single person, the sidewalk is totally usable. Some of these plants are even beautiful, not when I photographed them. If you're walking with a bike, now your bike's snagging on everything. You're getting twigs, seeds in your chain. It's not so bad, but it's not so great either. You might still walk on the sidewalk. Now, if you're walking with friends, or if you're walking with kids, now you're always switching to single file. It's friction trying to keep hold of your kids while you're going single file, you know? It is, it is so tiring. It breaks up your conversation, it disrupts your focus. I forgot to show you the picture of the garbage dump. Half a block before you get to the B-line, the sidewalk ends entirely to make way for a pile of private trashcans and parking. The sidewalk doesn't even go the whole distance. Of course it doesn't. What do you do? You walk in the street. This is absolutely normal. Like on homecoming weekend, I saw a bunch of, you know, students and student parents groups, anytime there's a group of more than about five people, they're just walking in the streets downtown because they couldn't fit on the sidewalk. About a month ago, Sean Sullivan was walking with his bicycle and two of his friends on Howe Street, same trip I did, I guess, from the police report. They could have used the same sidewalks that I photographed, but obviously, they, they didn't. They walked in the street. Driver tried to intimidate them into getting out of the street. Mr. Sullivan refused, and he was shot and killed. This is a transportation fatality. The conflict was based on the fact that one group felt they had no choice but to walk in the street, and somebody else felt entitled to demand that they leave the street. Both the victim and the suspect in this case are impoverished, but even between just them, they felt the class implications of our transportation system. People in cars matter, people without cars don't. In the extreme, this common attitude creates murder. You can't do anything about this in the short term, but we have to keep in mind that our car-first priorities that are enforced in this body still have consequences that are cultural and psychological beyond merely fiery crashes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments in chambers? Has anybody raised a hand on Zoom?
Yes, we have two.
Wonderful. Let's go ahead and go to that first Zoom commenter. When you're unmuted, go ahead and state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Paul Rousseau. Good evening. 12 days ago, on Friday, October 10th, I had a bicycling experience that I would like to share with you. At about 3:45 in the afternoon, I was westbound on Second Street because I had a medical appointment near the corner of Second and Landmark Avenue. Shortly after riding through the intersection at Rogers Street near the old hospital, my chain broke as I was riding uphill. I fell to my left into traffic. As I hit the ground, I saw a few tires come close to my head. Fortunately, no motor vehicle ran over me, and I suffered only minor injuries. However, what happened next was somewhat shocking. About a dozen cars drove around me. Nobody stopped to help. I was left to fend for myself and just get out of the way. My experience on Second Street is one more indication among many, such as excessive growth, that leaves me doubting that the city as a whole is a community. You may ask why I was bicycling on a busy route like Second Street. The reason is simple. Too much of Bloomington is designed like a suburb in which traffic is funneled into busy arteries with no parallel side streets. Regrettably, for this and many other reasons, I'm inclined to conclude that Bloomington is neither bicycle-friendly nor a real community, and I would suggest that the city stop calling itself a bicycle-friendly community. There are probably many other things that I could, that could be done to improve the situation, but I am out of time, and I'm unable to attend meetings of the Transportation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have another commenter on Zoom still?
Yes, one more.
Wonderful, thank you. When you're unmuted, you can go ahead and state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, council, it's Eric Spoonmore with the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to provide a couple of comments on different things tonight. Really appreciate Councilmember Zulich's letter, and really appreciate you all. I think you all did, it appeared that there was sending and signing, the, the letter was unanimous. So I think, you know, it's important that the city council is using its voice on these kinds of issues that really impact our downtown core. We've had the legal community in Bloomington basically since 1818, when Monroe County was founded, and now we've got a very consequential decision before us where this could all be uprooted and moved outside of the county seat into the more rural county jurisdiction that would absolutely cause some accessibility issues that the chamber is concerned about, and also would lead to some economic, I think, consequences for our small business community down there that I know a lot of you are very concerned about and aware of. So again, thank you for your support of that letter. I hope, you know, it may be an opportunity for the mayor to find some alignment here with the city council on an issue that, that really impacts our downtown community, and hope that the mayor's administration is kind of paying attention to that as well, too, as we have a big decision coming up with the county council next week on Wednesday, and, and the chamber will be there to provide some comments that are opposing the purchase of North Park as well, too. So again, thank you. Also want to reiterate some remarks made earlier by Councilmember Isabel Piedmont Smith. Thanks so much for plugging the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet on November 1st. NAACP of Monroe County is just a great chamber member, longtime chamber member, and I look forward to seeing many of you, government partners, community partners, at the banquet, so please do join us there for that as well, too. Thank you all for your work, and we will see you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we have somebody else here in chambers now, so if you want to go ahead and state your name for the record, I think you already signed in, you have up to three minutes.
Good evening, Madam President. This Christopher MG bookending the Chamber of Commerce. I just want to, first of all, say, I want to thank the council for their work on the budget process, and I, I was going to do some personal grievances today, but I want to keep it positive, so we'll, we'll save those. It's a hard, it's, it's a hard process, it's difficult, you're fluxed with a lot of different information, and you're working collaboratively, and it's not a great time to be doing budgets. I think the, the county, your, your county peers will probably agree with that. The Finance Committee meets tomorrow, and the work ahead continues. The, the financial crunch only gets deeper as we go into this, and as we go and get into outcome-based budgeting, some hard decisions are going to be made, and I think the chamber came from a, let's, we'll punt this year, but next year, we're, we're sort of expecting some, some real changes within the budgeting and how we're budgeting, just to make things ends meet and sort of pick some real priorities based on those outcomes that we want to do, and really maximize our utility, which is very important. The next thing I want to do is just sort of plug the other thing I do here at the, the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, which is our success school, which is the foundation feel-good arm of the chamber. We, two weeks from tomorrow, that would be November 6th, we are hosting our Career Cruise for seventh and eighth graders throughout the county, which is kind of a seafaring adventure to different jobs and employment, and I'm recommending local businesses, including the city council and Clerk Bolden's office, to join us in that. I've already sort of secured the election office, which I'm hoping to bring in a rotating group of elected officials, and it'd be a good chance to sort of do a little civics with seventh and eighth graders, but I'm encouraging all the departments within your city of Bloomington to join me in this very fun, engaging day. That's November 6th, that is a Thursday, it's roughly 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. If you have questions, you can reach me at the chamber office, I am available here. And my final plug is, it is basketball season, and if you ever want to have a sort of chat with me, let's go to Twin Lakes, we can go to a, the South High School on Sundays for some youth basketball, which I always love. Even though my son's injured, we'll still be there rooting on our peers. So support local basketball in the community. I want to see you at the Career Cruise. Thank you for your work on the council, it is appreciated, and the wonderful staff here today as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else here in chambers who would like to make a comment? Anybody online, raise their hand. Okay. I guess that closes this period of public comment. There is another period at the end of the meeting, if you want, if you decide between now and then that you want to comment on something not on the agenda. Since there are no appointments to boards and commissions, we are on to legislation for first readings.
I move that ordinance 2025-42 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-42. We can do that by voice vote, since we're all in person tonight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-42, to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Amending Bloomington Municipal Code 2.04.380, Order of Business at Regular Sessions. Synopsis: This ordinance amends Bloomington Municipal Code 2.04.380 to update the council's regular session agenda, expanding subsection 4, 5 to include the mayor, city clerk, city offices, city boards and commissions, and city partnership entities and reports.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, that's the only thing for first reading tonight, so we will have a second reading for that in two weeks at our next regular session meeting on November 5th, and that's when we will discuss that. So on to second readings and resolutions.
I move that ordinance 2025-38 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-38. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-38, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers and employees of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2026. Synopsis: This ordinance sets the minimum and maximum salary, salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2026, in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-38 be adopted. Second.
Wonderful. So who do we have tonight to present? Thank you. If you could state your name for the record, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, of course, thank you. Sharp Paycheck Director of Human Resources, presenting ordinance 2025-38 for police and fire salaries. Just some quick highlights from this ordinance for related to positions. There's one fire civil non-sworn position that was previously listed as full-time, but was actually filled as part-time and will remain part-time as intended going forward. Police eliminated an evidence clerk position, and they added a crime scene technician position just to better support their operations. There's a sworn administrative position. For those positions, the salaries are listed individually instead of being listed by their, a grade and a step, because they actually operate on the rank system, so it just made more sense to just simply list their salaries outright. This ordinance also includes a grade and step chart, and that's just updated for reference for graded positions, and those really are the highlights. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to note that we do have an amendment for this one, so I'm not sure if we want to introduce that amendment first or not.
Yes, I would like to introduce Amendment 1 to ordinance 2025-38.
Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
This amendment just corrects a typographical error in Section 3C, part-time and temporary positions. That's all I've got.
Okay, are there any questions related to Amendment 1? Okay, I don't see any questions. We do need to go to members of the public for public comment related to Amendment 1, which is fixing a typographical error. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on Amendment 1, if you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab. I see somebody moving in chambers, but I'm not sure that they're going to come and make a public comment on this right now, but I'm going to have to wait and make sure they don't reappear. I got the head shake. So seeing no public comment, that brings us back to council for any councilmember comment around Amendment 1.
All right, I see no, no comment. I'll go ahead and comment and say thank you to Councilmember Piedmont Smith for having such eagle eyes to spot these small details. That is wonderful to have somebody do that for us. So will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment 1 to ordinance 2025-38?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasper?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulich?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes unanimously. So now we're back to talking about this, this ordinance as amended. So we're going to go back and start with questions from councilmembers about the ordinance. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, in Section 2B, the last subsection there under other, says off-duty pay is received at a minimum of two hours, and I'm just a little confused how that works. So then there's a table that says shift pay differential. Could you maybe walk me through an example of this? Trying to understand it.
2B?
Yeah, it's page 67 of the packet, I'm not sure what page of the ordinance.
I am looking for, oh, no. Off-duty pay is received at a minimum of two hours. I will not pretend to specifically know the answer to that question. I don't know if, do you know, deputy? Is it, is it listed in the contract, and it just states that they will be paid at a minimum for two hours for that shift if they're called to duty? Does that answer your question?
Okay, so if they're off-duty, they're called onto duty, even if they only have an hour worth of work, they'll be paid for?
They get paid a minimum of two hours.
And then what is the table beneath that for?
This table, are you talking about the shift pay differential for, depending on what shift they work, then they get paid a differential per week?
So let's say they're off-duty. They're asked to come in, they work two hours, the afternoon shift, so then they get some fraction of the $16 also?
No, one is explaining what they get on a weekly basis. No, one is explaining what they get on a weekly basis, just if they are coming in in the afternoon or they're coming in in the evening. That's a weekly rate. What you asked me about, about the off-duty pay, is how much they are paid for each hour, $2, two hours minimum. So, one is hourly and one is weekly.
So, does the shift pay differential table have anything to do with off-duty pay? Because it looks like it's under the off-duty pay. That's why I got confused.
I can see why that would be confusing. I think that they are different, but they're just together because they both represent two different types of other pay.
Okay, so they're two separate things?
Two separate types of other pay, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry for that confusion.
Thank you. Are there other questions from council members for Director Paycheck? All right, I don't see any questions, but so I'm going to ask one. I was wondering, since it takes so much time and energy to train new dispatchers, and we've been challenged in that area, if it made sense to consider some kind of bonus or retention after they've actually worked a set amount of time after their training period? Like, if they do their training period and then stay for six months or stay for a year, whether, because I feel like there were other, there were other bonuses in here, and I'm wondering if that type of bonus has been discussed at all anywhere?
No, that type of bonus has not been discussed at all. I mean, I think that's a good recommendation for consideration, so we can always have that conversation with Chief Decoff. Of course, I understand all things are budget-related, and we also try to be fair and consistent in how we fill positions and offer pay, though I know that this is a hard-to-fill position. So, we're always looking for opportunities to attract and retain more talent in this position. But to answer your specific question, we haven't talked about that, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Do you have something to add?
Deputy Mayor Knapp was just explaining that the dispatchers are not a part of this particular ordinance. They are a part of the civil city ordinance, the next ordinance that I'll be presenting this evening.
But their pay grades are listed under the police department in this ordinance?
Yeah, it's because they are within the police department, but they are actually civil city positions.
But they're, but they're not actually in this ordinance, even though it's listed in this ordinance?
They are not, they are not a part of the police contract, but these positions are actually a part of the police department.
So, this ordinance doesn't approve those positions, even though those positions are listed within this ordinance? I'm confused now.
This ordinance, to my understanding, includes all positions that are a part of the police and also the fire department, whether they are sworn or not. So, as long as they are a part of the police department, then they are listed here.
So, they would be listed here, not in the civil city one later?
Yeah. I'm sorry for the confusion. I just, I apologize. I know I added some unnecessary confusion. I was just making sure that if you had questions about civil city and how we are paying civil city, that would include our dispatch positions, as an example, then I just wanted you to know that that is separate, meaning that it would not be a part of the negotiation. It would not be negotiated to pay any type of additional bonus for retention to our dispatchers. That would be included in how we would pay our civil positions.
Okay.
Sorry.
But they're in this ordinance, not in this, okay, all right. It's just in a different bucket of negotiation and salary consideration?
Yes. Let me make sure.
Okay, thank you. That, that makes sense now. Are there, are there other questions from council members? All right, let's go ahead and go back to the public. If the public has any comments about, I've lost track of my ordinance number, ordinance number 2025-38 as amended. If you're in chambers, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab. I don't see anybody moving in chambers, and I'm getting shakes from over there at the council staff table that nobody's raised a hand on Zoom. So, we will go ahead and revert back to council members for any council comments on ordinance 2025-38 as amended. I don't see anybody up here raising a hand, so I'll just say thank you to Director Paycheck, and thank you to our police and our fire departments for the good work that they do. And will the clerk please call the roll then on ordinance 2025-38 as amended?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Moving on to the next one.
I move that ordinance 2025-39 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-39, to fix the salaries of appointed deputies and employees of the Bloomington City Clerk for the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2026. Synopsis: This salary ordinance establishes the 2026 maximum salaries for Bloomington City Clerk employees.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-39 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It looks like we have our city clerk up there ready to present. If you could please state your name for the record, and then the floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is. Every time you respond, it throws me just a little bit. So, I'm Nicole Bolden. I'm the Bloomington City Clerk, and I am here to talk to you about the 2026 salaries for the clerk staff. There are no major changes to the number of clerk staff that are in the office, so you'll still see the chief deputy and three other deputies, along with funding for our interns. We have incorporated the 2.7% COLA increase that all civil city staff are going to be receiving in 2026, and I am open to any questions that you may have about the clerk staff, clerk office, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, for which we're all wearing purple, and I thank you all for doing that as well.
Thank you. Are there questions for the clerk? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
So, I didn't do the math. So, is the 2.7% the only increase?
If I recall correctly, there is another increase for longevity, and I cannot remember which staff member it was for. So, yes, there was an increase for longevity for one of the staff members, but we paralleled the same structure that the administration does for safe and civil city staff, and we double-checked the numbers with the controller to make sure that we, well, math is not my strong suit. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That may have answered my question, was that the deputy clerk of Communications and Outreach actually was at a 5.7% increase.
Longevity.
So, maybe that's the one that would have been the longevity, and that would be why, because I was wondering that. Are there other questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Whoops, I turned myself off. My question is about, under your direction, your office, are your employees competitive with other clerk offices around the country in terms of their pay relative to their duties and so forth? Is that something that you track and that, you know, we should be aware that that is, you know, that we're keeping, that it's brought to our attention?
Thank you for asking the question. Most of the research that we have done in our office has related to other second-class cities around the state, which is problematic, as I've said before, because you're looking at offices and staff that have historically been undervalued, primarily filled with women. So, the work that is done by the staff is not valued at the same rate as other departments or positions, whether it's in the private or public sector. So, yes, we've looked at them, and I cannot recall off the top of my head where we fall in terms of clerk staff salaries by comparison with other second-class cities. I'd be happy to pull that up and get it to you, but I won't be able to give it to you tonight, and I apologize for that.
Oh, of course. I mean, I'm thinking maybe next year's budget, maybe we should pay attention to that. Clerk Bolden, you brought up last time, the last few weeks about the cost of living increase in Bloomington being higher than a lot of second-class cities, and we should also be cognizant of that. So, I just wanted to bring that up as a sort of a, I know we were not going to make adjustments tonight, but just rhetorically speaking, looking to the future to make sure that your office remains competitive and that you're able to hire people that you, that you need, the high-quality staff that you, that you have now. So, thank you.
Thank you for noticing. Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, I have another one, too. Last year, you didn't have any interns listed, and so I'm just wondering how, what your intern plan is. It's budgeted for two? Are you planning on working at, like, them working all year, 40 hours a week, or like, what's your, what are you thinking?
That was actually an oversight last year where we had the money budgeted for interns, but it actually wasn't enumerated in the clerk's salary budget itself. So, that was something that we were working to correct. I think most of what we do is a work in progress, and we're always trying to make sure that we're in line with best practices and what the code says, always. I'm going to be very careful about that since two of my law school professors are in the room right now. I don't want to disappoint them. So, anyway, but yes, that was just an oversight last year. We corrected it.
Okay, so interns aren't new then?
They are not new. We've had interns in the office.
Okay, I thought that you had had interns before, and, but then I was like confused, so.
Yeah.
All right, great. So, there's like no changes basically in terms of the intern stuff, like quantities, hours, all that stuff from past years?
Probably fewer hours overall because we didn't increase the amount that we had in that line, which has been at about $15,000 for years. But the intern pay, the hourly rate, has gone up over the years as well.
Great, thank you. Other questions? All right, let's go ahead and go to members of the public then. If members of the public would like to make any comments regarding ordinance 2025-39, if you're in chambers, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hands using the reactions tab. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Has anybody raised a hand on Zoom? All right then, I think that we revert back to council for council member comments. Are there council member comments on ordinance 2025-39? Councilmember Daley?
I just wanted to take this moment to say thank you very much to the, to the clerk and to the clerk's staff. I know we cannot have our meetings without you guys being there, and you're often quietly supporting us, and sometimes maybe we forget to double-check first that, hey, can clerk staff be there for one of our meetings when we're trying to talk? And I apologize. And we'll do better remembering that, but, but truly, I mean, the staff is amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments? All right, I think then we're ready to call the roll, if the clerk could do that, for ordinance 2025-39.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you all so much. I move that ordinance 2025-40 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-40, an ordinance to fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSCME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2026. Synopsis: Ordinance 2025-40 sets the maximum 2026 salary for all appointed officers, non-union, and AFSCME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana.
I move ordinance 2025-40 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And who is going to present this one? If you could again state your name for the record, even though we all know who you are.
Yeah, happy to. Hi, again, Shar Paycheck, Director of Human Resources, presenting ordinance 2025-40 for appointed officers, non-union, and AFSCME salaries.
Thank you. I believe that we also have an amendment on this one. Would you like to do that amendment first?
Yes, I move amendment 1 to ordinance 2025-40.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on an amendment. Go ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Okay, so this one is in regard to section 2I, and all of section 2I has been incorporated into the amendment, but it's really towards the end where there's a clarification of the additional 50 cents per hour premium for master equipment operators at Dillman. And then in section 2L, there's the same typographical correction as we had for the previous salary ordinance.
Thank you. Are there council member questions on this amendment to ordinance 2025-40? All right, I don't see any questions from council members about that, so we'll go ahead and go to members of the public for any public comment regarding just amendment 1 for ordinance 2025-40 to do that clarification that Councilmember Piedmont Smith mentioned and to correct that typographical error. If there's members of the public who would like to comment on this amendment, if you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab. I don't see anybody moving in chambers, and no hands raised on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and revert back to council for any council member comment on the amendment. All right, I don't see any, so I will just say thank you once again, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, for having such eagle eyes. So, will the clerk please call the roll on amendment 1 to ordinance 2025-40?
Councilmember Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. So, now we're back to discussing the ordinance as a whole as amended. So, are there any questions that anybody has for Director Paycheck? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I have a couple. So, Dr. Paycheck, in your memo where you summarize revised positions under utilities, in page 2 of the memo, it says all of the six divisions at CBU have an administrative assistant, except environmental programs. So, we're moving the line locates to the new, the line locates, I guess that's a task, to the new lead communications operator and have an environmental programs administrative assistant to be the point person. So, is that administrative assistant position new then?
So, utilities has a lot of revisions in this ordinance, so I invited Director Zager to answer any specific questions, if that's okay? Okay, thank you.
Please, just make sure to state your name for the record. That would be great.
Kathryn Zager, Director of Utilities. No, this position is not new. It's being moved from one division to another. The division it's being moved from is transmission and distribution. They have someone who does a lot of their administrative duties already. This was kind of, I don't want to say a backup because... This was kind of, I don't want to say a backup, because she was also doing a lot of administrative work, but to balance it out with environmental, who did not have an administrative assistant, she's going to be moving over to here, and some of those tasks are going to be distributed to our, if you notice, there's a lead communications operator as well. So that is a new position. Well, it's turning a position into a new position, so we have communications operators. That's turning into a lead communications operator, who will have more duties, and will take on the line locates, like you're saying. That will go to the lead communications operator, and it makes more sense in that position anyway, so that the administrative assistant can work in the environmental division.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I thought it was a new position, but then it said fiscal impact zero, so I was confused, so it's just moving the position. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Pete Motz Smith, go ahead. I don't see anybody else with a question.
Also, in the memo, there's a section called Additional Changes, and it says, "An updated collective bargaining agreement with AFSCME is being negotiated. However, AFSCME representatives and the city executive branch have agreed to implement a 5% hourly increase to take effect January 1st." So was that 5% hourly increase in our budget that we approved a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. And then, my last, may I? Totally different question. When I look at the hourly rates table on page 92 of the packet, that's within this ordinance, I see the minimum for several jobs is $16.66, which I understand is the new living wage for the city of Bloomington. Have there been, has there been any consideration to revising our living wage ordinance to actually match what is, in reality, more of a living wage? Because 16.66 is not something you can actually live off of.
We haven't had that conversation at this time. We do realize it's expensive to live in the city of Bloomington, and we try to do the best to be as competitive as we can within the budget constraints, and if we can increase that, I'm sure all the administration would be open to doing so, but right now, we just try to stay as aligned as we can with, like, federal regulations of the minimum wage and what we feel would be competitive for those common law positions, and hopefully in the future, you know, maybe we would be able to adjust accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I think, then, we're going back to public comment. So this would be public comment on ordinance 2025, oh dear, I think that we're on 40, 2025-40 as amended. So if there are any members of the public who would like to make a comment on ordinance 2025-40 as amended, if you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab. I, once again, don't see anybody moving in chambers. Does anybody have a hand raised on Zoom? Okay, I think, then, that we, once again, don't have public comment on this, so we will come back to councilmembers for any closing comments regarding the civil city salaries for 2026. Councilmember Pete Motz Smith?
I just want to express my interest in revisiting our living wage ordinance for the city of Bloomington, because we do have some part-time and temporary positions that can be paid 16.66 an hour as of January 1st, which is below the actual livable wage in Bloomington. The MIT has a living wage calculator, and they say the living wage for a single adult without children is $20.96 for Monroe County, Indiana. So I would like to revisit our ordinance. I know that we're coming into some lean times, as far as our budget, but I think it's a top priority of mine to take care of our employees, so this is something I'll try to look into and work with the administration on before next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from councilmembers? I'll go ahead and comment, too, and I just will, once again, kind of revisit the equity issue that I brought up last year with regard to the cost of living increases. So when we have this across-the-board percentage cost of living increase, those making the least amount of money also get the least raise, and those making the most amount of money get the most raise, even though everybody is theoretically paying the same base amount, say, for things like groceries and utilities and things like that. So I just wanted to point out that the first step of our grade 14 salary increases will get a $950 raise for the year in terms of that 2.7% COLA, while the first step of our grade 14 salary gets over $3,500 as a raise. And over time, that exacerbates the wage gap between those making the least amount of money and those making the most amount of money, and so it just exacerbates inequities over time. And there are, you know, doing an across-the-board COLA is kind of an easy way to do it in the short term, but in the long term, it can also cause problems. So I'll, once again, raise the issue that it's important to kind of look at that in the future and not necessarily always give static across-the-board COLA increases. One thing the county did a couple of years ago was give additional increases to those at the lowest end of the pay scale to kind of make up for a few years of that kind of differential happening. So I would just, once again, want to raise that as an issue that we make sure to look at over time, so that we don't have huge wage gap differentials, or, I mean, we kind of already do, but, so that those don't get exacerbated even worse over time. So unless there are other councilmember comments, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2025-40 as amended?
Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Motz Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes. So that passes unanimously, and on to the next.
I move that resolution 2025-18 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce resolution 2025-18. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2025-18, to approve the naming of the stadium district and the area surrounding Miller Showers Park. Synopsis: This resolution, co-sponsored by Councilmember Stasburg, names the area around Miller Showers Park as the stadium district. This naming will foster community pride, promote economic growth, and enhance tourism in the area.
Thank you.
I move resolution 2025-18 be adopted.
Second.
And I'm going to pass this gavel over to Councilmember Pete Motz Smith as vice president.
Okay, do we have a presentation on this item?
I think that that's me. It's a very short presentation. I just want to remind people that two weeks ago, we introduced this, and the kind of conclusion at the end of the meeting was we postponed it to tonight to allow an amended map to be presented, and I am very, very sad to say that, so last week, the amended map, or an amended map, got sent to me and to Director Cooper Smith, and I didn't like it. And so, so we asked the GIS department to change it again, and just in terms of their workflow, they were not able to get that back to me until yesterday. So I do have it now, and I actually really like it, but I did not feel like that was adequate time, after receiving that map, to make sure to get any kind of feedback that needed to be received, to make sure that the concerns expressed last meeting about this by various members of our community, that I could address those with them, and that I could give you all the map and time to freely actually consider it. So on that note, I would like to move to postpone consideration of resolution 2025-18 until our next regular session on November 5th, to allow for that time.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone resolution 2025-18 to November 5th. Is there any discussion questions on that? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, discussion, okay, I would like, so my thought is, I would like to postpone it farther, because I don't think Matlock Heights has been consulted. I don't think Blue Ridge neighborhood has been consulted. I don't know what the name is of the neighborhood where all the student housing is, but I don't know if we've reached out to them. Maple Heights had a neighborhood association meeting last night, but they already had a director who asked if he could speak at the meeting, so ESD was not there. Their next meeting is scheduled sometime in late November, and so that, like, the November 5th definitely doesn't give any time to get on the agenda of a neighborhood I think that neighborhoods need to be consulted about this. Going to the meeting last night, it's, this, one thing sounds kind of small and fixable. People don't like the name of it. People don't want to, residents who live in Maple Heights, at least, don't want to live in a district called the stadium district. And I think it is important to feel proud of, like, what your area is named, and, like, I was just looking up, you know, like, when we renamed Eagleson Avenue, there was a task force that was created, it had four meetings, public suggested over 500 names, those were, like, wait, it was recommended to the plan commission, and I think it is, like, that big of a deal, that we shouldn't be rushing this name, and we need to, like, have the public weigh-in on it, the way we have the public weigh-in on naming other things in our city.
Yes, Councilmember Stasburg?
I think, in terms of, like, procedure, we can only postpone things one meeting at a time. Is that correct, attorneys? I'm not sure which one of you wants to answer the question.
Yes, I think that would be the most prudent course of action, to continue it to the next meeting in this session, which would be November 5th. It could potentially be postponed again to another date beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments before we vote on the motion on the table? Will Deputy Clerk Stoll please call the roll on the motion to postpone resolution
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Uh, yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo? Oh, sorry. Pete Motz Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
And that vote to postpone carries with a vote of eight, zero, and I'll hand the gavel back to President Stasburg.
Thank you. Next legislation. No, you're fine.
I move that ordinance 2025-32 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-32, to amend Title 20, Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Use Table Amendment, Urban Agriculture. Synopsis: This amendment, and, oh, is that wrong?
Oh, yeah, it's not the amendment, it's the actual ordinance.
It's an amendment to the UDO. I think that's the point of confusion, correct?
Thank you, I was trying to find it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yeah.
I will commence. Synopsis: The amendment introduces a new land use, urban agriculture commercial. This new land use will allow some expanded services and offerings within the city for urban agriculture uses beyond the current similar land use of urban agriculture non-commercial. The new proposed land use would allow for an outdoor education component, onsite employees, and year-round retail sales for produce grown on the property. This use is proposed to be a conditional accessory use in the R1 to R4, RM, and RH districts, and a permitted use in all other districts. There are use-specific standards, a new definition, and related adjustments to the numbering of preceding sections of the UDO. This ordinance is in accordance with Indiana Code 36-7-4-600.
Thank you.
I move ordinance 2025-32 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Who do we have here to present tonight? If you could introduce yourself for the record, and then the floor is yours.
Thank you. Eric Grulick, Development Services Manager. So this particular amendment was part of a package of amendments to the use table that came forward to the Plan Commission earlier this year. There were five amendments to the use table that came forward. Some of those have been previously heard by the council, or, I'm sorry, five or six amendments to the use table. Some of those have been heard by the council. Two of those took a little bit longer to get through the Plan Commission process, so the urban agriculture and the single-room occupancy ordinances took a little bit longer and are coming to the council now. So this particular ordinance amendment for the urban agriculture has been on the Planning Department's radar for a while, but because it involved an amendment to the use table itself, which has certain public notification requirements, namely that amendments to the use table, there's a zoning district map, require notification to all affected property owners, which, in effect, require notification to everybody in the city, we don't make changes to the use table very often. So with a series of amendments that had come, that were coming forward, that were amending the use table, we packaged all of those together, and so this was one of those packaged ordinances that was coming forward. So, as I mentioned, this has been something that has been on the Planning Department's radar for a while, as there are several sections of the Comprehensive Plan and the Climate Action Plan that encourage changes to the zoning code to encourage urban agriculture uses. You know, we had been trying to look for opportunities to incorporate that within the UDO, and so we came forward with an amendment to introduce this new ordinance called Urban Agriculture Commercial. This was intended to be something very similar to an existing land use within the UDO called Urban Agriculture Non-Commercial. And so the differences between the two, or, I guess, maybe more specifically, the limitations on the non-commercial use that we were trying to broaden, did not allow for onsite education components. Severely limited number, or the amount of uses that could occur on there required everything to occur within a building, didn't allow for year-round sales. So we had encountered a situation, or situations, where, you know, individuals wanted to do expanded offerings on a site to teach this particular use, to allow for this to occur outside of a building. So while there is an allowance in the UDO for home occupations that allows a very scaled-back version of a commercial use, you know, home occupations, you can have any number of commercial uses, accounting, massage therapy, piano teachers, whatever. The urban agriculture non-commercial use didn't allow for anything to happen outside of a building. So we came forward for this use, and we allowed for that outdoor component, the education component, the classes, allowed for year-round sales. We looked to kind of expand what the UDO allowed for non-commercial uses, to allow it for a little bit broader scope. And so we came forward to allow this as what's called a conditional accessory use, meaning that the primary use on a property has to be established first. So in single-family districts, you know, the list of permitted land uses is very small, so you have to have a permitted use on the property first and foremost, and then this is allowed as a conditional use, accessory to that main use. So it still is, and it has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals or the Hearing Officer to receive a conditional use approval. So this is simply creating a path for this use to occur within the city. There's still another path that it has to go through if individuals want to establish this on a particular property, so it's being proposed as a conditional accessory use. So with this use, as I mentioned, we were allowing for an education for an education component. So there's a limitation, what's called the use-specific limitations for this use, that allow for employees. So it says that you have allow, it allows for maximum of one employee or volunteer per minimum lot size of the district. And so what that means is, for instance, in the R2 zoning district, where your minimum lot size is 7,200 square feet, if you have a lot to 7,200 square feet, you get one employee. If you have a lot that's twice that size, you know, so at least 14,400 square feet, then you get two employees. But there is a maximum amount of three employees that are allowed on any given property regardless of the size. So this ordinance had a use-specific limitation to allow for employees that is relationable to the size of a property. Likewise, for the classes. So one of the things that we encountered were that individuals wanted to be able to teach or have a teaching education component to this. So we looked at how to apportion the number of the class size relative, again, to the size of the property, looking at it from a perspective of, you know, a property of a certain size, the amount of people on that side, or the amount of people on that property is proportional to the size of that. So the number, the class size is limited to two people per minimum lot size. So again, with the same relation to the employees, if you've got a lot of 7,200 square feet, you get two people per class size, and then, you know, you can, you can increase that proportionally. But again, there was a maximum of eight enrolled employees, or eight enrolled students regardless of your lot size. So those are some of the main use-specific restrictions. We do, it did allow for year-round sales, does allow for slightly larger greenhouses or outdoor structures that are associated with this use. And so the Plan Commission heard this at two separate hearings. At their August hearing, they voted five to three to forward this to you with a favorable recommendation. So that is the proposal that the Planning Department and the Plan Commission has forwarded on to you. So with that, as I mentioned, it'll be a conditional accessory in the residential districts. The ordinance that left the Plan Commission had it as a permitted use in all the mixed-use districts with no use-specific restrictions in the mixed-use districts. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I do want to note that I have an amendment to this, but I don't want to introduce the amendment until after there is at least some initial council member questions about the ordinance as it is. So are there questions from council members? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you for the presentation. So, right now, we have non-commercial urban agriculture. And if I grow produce on my property, I can sell that produce 180 days a year, not 360, correct?
Correct.
And I can sell it, people can come and buy it from me, people can, I can set up a stand, I could take it to the farmer's market. So essentially, I could have essentially a commercial use in a sense of my property already.
Yes, so in a limited degree, yeah.
Okay. So furthermore, people hire people for groundskeeping, trimming trees, you know, outdoor activity essentially. So I could hire people currently. So I'm trying to discern exactly what, what the difference is here. So, so I could invite, you know, I could hire people to come to my property. I can hire three people to come to my property and work. And there's no restriction on days of the week or, or the frequency of those visits, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what about if I were to invite a class of students over? Right now, I would be restricted in having students visit my property for, let's just say I plant native flora in the backyard, and some teacher has an interest in, you know, native landscaping. So maybe a class outing involves students coming to my property. Is that restricted right now?
So that's, that gets it a little bit trickier. So with the UDO, you know, you have, there's, while there is a permitted land use that is on a property, there are a whole mix of things that might happen kind of incidentally. So yes, you, you have a class that comes over, and you just want to show them things. If that is something that starts happening on a regular basis every week, then, then that can start to change a little bit of the, the scope or the, the use of a property from a residence to, to maybe something a little bit different than that. So that's kind of handled on a case-by-case basis, and we don't deal with that very often. But there are situations where, you know, somebody does something with such a regularity that, that it becomes a little bit different than just a typical single-family residence, and so we have to look at it from a little bit different lens.
Okay. May I just ask a couple more from starters, or would you like to move on?
Why don't we see if other folks have questions? Does that, does that work, or do you have something else?
Well, could I just follow up to say, since we're talking about classes, so does the current proposed ordinance limit how often the frequency that classes can come? So for instance, could classes come every day?
Well, so again, so it's a little bit different. So as I mentioned with the home occupation, so the home occupation language says that you can do certain activities from your house, but if you have any employees or customers visiting the premises, then you need a home occupation approval. So there are limitations in the UDO of, you know, who is coming or what is, what is the intent of individuals coming there besides just to visit you. So that's where I said, you know, we have to kind of look at it from a different lens of, if you're having classes or you're having people that you hired, you know, and landscaping's are a little bit different. Obviously, people will hire people to cut the grass all the time or keep their flowers or whatever. But if it's associated with an activity that is, is limited in some regards, then we have to look at it from a little bit different lens of, you know, is this approaching or exceeding kind of what the UDO was intending for, limiting it to just a single-family residence and, you know, activities that are customary incidental to that, and kind of elevating it to a different level. So that's why with this ordinance, we incorporated language to deal with employees, because those employees might be coming every single day. Very rarely, it could come every single day of every single day of the year. So that is not typical of a single-family residence, where you've got somebody doing something on your property every single day of the year. And so we have to, we always have to, unfortunately in our world, look at things from the worst-case scenario, and like, if this got, you know, utilized to a maximum extent, what would that look like? How would that impact neighbors? What would the impacts of that be? And so as we were looking at this particular ordinance and writing it with a, a broader perspective in mind of what the uses could occur, you know, it does occur, obviously, that you could have employees that would be on a very regular basis, and what limitations might be appropriate for that.
Okay, so just to summarize what you said, kind of, I hope I'm getting this correct, that this puts limitations on the frequency of, say, employees, and number of employees for that purpose of urban ag. Currently, there are none now.
For, for the urban agriculture non-commercial, there are no limitations on that now. And the reason, you know, so the urban ag non-commercial, you know, there were, there were two kind of scenarios that we had kind of envisioned or had discussed when that was being proposed. One of those were, you know, kind of the, the neighborhood-serving garden plot. You know, so you, you've got a vacant lot within a neighborhood, and all the neighbors just want to get together, and they want to have their little garden plots on that neighborhood, and they're growing the stuff there for their use. So they are the employee. Or there was a situation where somebody has a, a little section of their lawn, and they want to have tomato plants or whatever, and they want to sell those at the end of the year, or, you know, whatever they generate. It was a somewhat limiting thing because the size of the property and the people that were using it lived on there. So this particular use, the people that are coming and going there don't live there. You know, they, they could be coming from anywhere. And so again, like I said, we were trying to look at it from a broader perspective of, you know, if this is hugely successful, and, and as I mentioned, you know, that's kind of how we have to look at these things oftentimes, is if this happens to the, the most practical extent, you know, what limitations might be appropriate for that. And so that's why we felt like it was necessary to, to deal with employees and then customers for classes.
Thank you. Are there other questions from council members? Councilmember, sorry.
Thank you so much, Director Gulek. Could you tell us a little bit about the, the process that you just mentioned, that the accessory use element means that people have to go to the BZA? Is that correct?
Yes. So this, as I mentioned, this is listed as a conditional accessory use, meaning first and foremost, you have to have a permitted land use on the property. So in the single-family districts, that would have to be, you know, a single-family residence, or a duplex, or something like that, one, a permitted use in that zoning district. And then, you know, with that use being on the property first and foremost, then you can apply for a conditional use approval to allow for this use specifically. So it's not allowed by right. You know, in all of our zoning districts, you know, you have a list of permitted uses that you can just do by right, you don't have to have approval for. And then there are some uses that are listed as conditional uses, meaning you have to go through a specific process to allow for that use specifically.
And what are the standards that the BZA will follow to determine whether or not somebody is given this conditional use?
Yeah, so there are about seven, I think, criteria in the UDO that deal with conditional uses. You know, one of those is compliance with the UDO specifically, compliance with utility standards. You know, there's an aspect that relates it to the Comprehensive Plan. And so, yeah, there, there are some very broad standards. But then also certainly, if there are any use-specific standards that apply to that, we go through those use-specific standards and assess the proposal based on those specifically.
And then once, once a resident has this conditional permit, or conditional accessory use, does that last forever, or?
Yes. Yeah, so it runs with the property and does not have a time expiration on it.
Okay. And then is there anything, any mechanism within the current proposal that would allow any adjustments to this? So can somebody currently lose that, that permit if they, you know, is there, is there any condition under which they could lose that permit?
I would say that there would have to be a very egregious instance where something really changed dramatically in the scope and scale where it would no longer be appropriate at that location. You know, so there are two different things that kind of, in enforcement world that we deal with. You know, one would be a violation of the UDO where somebody is subject to fines. And then the second would be, you know, if there was a situation where there was a conditional use approval, and to be honest, we've never dealt with this. I mean, we've never had a situation where a conditional use has been rescinded after the fact down the line. You know, nine times out of 10, the conditional uses that we see are churches or schools or something like that. So there would have to be something really drastic that has changed where that, that use was no longer appropriate there. So if somebody was violating a use-specific restriction or any other section of the UDO, they would just be subject to fines. So we, you know, we would obviously want to consult with the legal department very carefully before we went down the path of rescinding a conditional use approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Hi, thank you.
Okay. These are just high-level, and I have a lot in the weeds as well, but how many public outreach or engagement meetings took place for this use change?
We did not have any specific neighborhood meetings. As I mentioned, you know, this was part of like six or seven overall amendments to the UDO, but there were, you know, notification letters that were mailed out to every property owner in the city.
Got it. I just ask because there was just a duplex, conditional duplex put in on Wiley Street that would add two extra bedrooms to a house, and the neighbors were super concerned about that parking, and it took about six months. So just like when we're talking about adding a lot of parking, I do, I guess just like, why weren't there? Because I think that we were adding more cars in this scenario than we are for a duplex. And why did we not find it important to engage the public?
Well, I guess I'd be, I'd be saying, you know, the public was engaged during the Plan Commission process. You know, we received a lot of letters and phone calls and inquiries, and as soon as all of the letters went out, you know, it's hard to do a city-wide involvement for a wide range of amendments. For one thing specifically, so the Plan Commission hearings was, were that engagement process, as well as obviously the council meeting here tonight.
Oh, okay. That sounds hard to, for me. Again, I just feel like people are really particular about parking. I want to also just say I don't disagree that this is a neat thing to add, a teaching element. I have other questions. I don't know if I should just keep going, or if people, they're not related.
Why don't we see if there's other questions? Councilmember Daly?
I just have a quick clarification following up on something you answered for Councilmember Rosenberg. You said you received a lot of letters and phone calls regarding this. Was from community members about this specific?
Yeah, so I would say, you know, this and the single-room occupancy pieces of legislation certainly received a high number of letters from members of the public prior to the Plan Commission, as well as at the Plan Commission hearings.
Okay. And were they, what was the general overview of them? Were they, were there some in support? Were there some against? How was the tone?
In this particular ordinance, I would say there was a very high number of folks that were very concerned about it. We did see, receive a lot of letters of people that were in support of it. We also did receive a lot of letters from people that were very concerned about it. You know, at the risk of summarizing or speaking for other people, you know, the concerns obviously were the incorporation of something that was viewed as commercial zoning within residential zoning districts seemed to be paving a way for other possible uses that might be more impactful. So, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Are there other council member questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, first, just could you help explain the rationale for where this falls in the use table? It's under, like, public civic institutional uses, whereas it strikes me as maybe more analogous to, like, commercial uses or accessory uses? Maybe accessory uses where, like, home occupation lives, for instance. You were analogizing this to home occupation, except for, you know, being outdoors. So, yeah, first question, just could you explain, like, why this fits under the civic, public, and institutional?
Yeah, we put it right next to where urban agriculture non-commercial is, you know, just because it was supposed to be, and it was just viewed as just a slight enhancement of that particular land use itself. Yes, certainly, you could argue that it could probably go in retail, it could go in, you know, a number of other different subheadings, but we were really just kind of looking at as a slight modification or expansion of that existing land use, which is also why we, you know, just called it commercial to differentiate from that. But, you know, we were really not intending for it to be, you know, a huge leap in terms of differences between the two.
Okay. So it seems like Councilmember Rallo was asking questions initially that kind of illustrated that almost all of what's envisioned with this use is already covered by other existing uses. The exception is this kind of like educational home business component. And I guess I'm looking at home occupation, again, by a way of analogy in the UDO, and there are some outdoor components to the home occupation use, if I'm not mistaken? Is that right?
Well, if you, if you look at the definition of home occupation, it says it occurs within a building. And so that was the limitation that we ran into. And so we, we can't, you know, you can't receive a variance from a definition. So the only way to really allow for this use was to give it its own separate land use and amend the use table to incorporate in that regard.
I guess, related follow-ups, could you also have updated home occupation to expand a little bit to include both indoor and outdoor uses?
Yes, certainly, that, that could have been a different path. It would have required amending the definition. But the concern with that, with amending the definition is you then expand that to any other home occupation. And so sometimes, you know, there are, could be other home occupations, for instance, car repair, that might not be appropriate. You know, having, having somebody at their house, working on cars late at night, having cars outside of a building, you know, might not be appropriate. So by changing the definition, you can allow for any number of things that maybe you didn't foresee or didn't want. And so since we were trying to fix something for one particular area, you know, it seemed better to just write something very specific for that use, so that we're not opening up the door for, for anything else.
So I guess, sorry, last follow-up here. Generally, I, I, with zoning, I think we should try to take approaches that apply consistently. across different types of things that are analogous. I can imagine lots of other outdoor uses that might not fit in this new use, but also don't fit under the home occupation. And so I guess, like, my default is to prefer, like, not something hyper-specific, but actually like a set of rules that applies more broadly. Sorry, I'm just, it seems like that was not the approach the department chose to take, or like?
Well, so, yeah. Sorry, I mean, I don't know.
No, no, that's okay. I guess I'm just trying to better understand, like, somebody who wants to teach like outdoor yoga classes, or like, I'm thinking of like, inconsistencies too with respect to parking, like Councilmember Rosenbarger mentioned, and what's required in the home occupation. Like, the home occupation, yes, we can't imagine everything that might go on inside the home. There is also this outdoor retail component that can accompany it. But that's like the example of the type of thing I like to see, so even if it's an entirely new use that is outdoor home occupation, I guess what I'm asking for is like, wouldn't it be better to take an approach that allows different uses, including things we might not imagine? Like, and just appropriately, like, A, it's conditional, and B, like, sets constraints around, you know, nuisance essentially, like noise, or pollution, or otherwise?
Yeah, sure.
Instead of this one use?
Yeah, certainly. And so where we were coming from is, we had not, we had not encountered requests for home occupations that were running into that restriction of everything had to occur within a building, other than this situation. So they, you know, there was a situation where somebody did go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they had to deny it because there was not a way to allow for this use to occur outside the building under the home occupation allowance. So we had not encountered any situation where people had been coming forward to do something as a home occupation that they wanted to do outside. And so, you know, without really a general impetus for fixing that and opening things up, we were, again, just trying to write something that was for the very specific challenge that was in front of us.
We'd also never heard of that challenge until this particular instance, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, I see two wanting a round two, so I'm going to take one before we go to round two. And it's kind of following up a little bit on, if we go way back to the beginning of this with Councilmember Rallo's questions, he theorized somebody who currently is essentially operating under the urban agriculture non-commercial, they're growing things, they're selling things for part of the year. Do they have to go and get this approval for what it is that they're doing right now just because they're making money off of something?
No, so they, so the use urban agriculture non-commercial is listed as an accessory use in every district, you know, with the use-specific restrictions, or I'm sorry, as a permitted use, in every single zoning district. So, you know, those, and I know that there are a few isolated ones that are, that was occurring, but oftentimes, I mean, we don't know where they all are because they don't have to get an approval from us. You know, I can, I can certainly say that there are a few vacant lots in neighborhoods that those neighborhoods are using for their local neighborhood garden plots, but I, you know, I have no idea how many there are, because like I said, you know, they don't have to get an approval from us for that use.
Okay, great. I wanted to clarify that because I actually got that public comment from somebody who was concerned that they would have to change how they were doing, like, that they would have to apply for this special thing. So if whatever you're doing right now, like, falls under the UDO, you don't have to do that. And then the other thing I wanted to ask again, and Councilmember Rallo's kind of class situation of somebody who just wants to, you know, have people over so that you can teach them about stuff. If you're not asking them to pay you, then, like, then it doesn't really matter, right? Like, even if you're doing it every day, if you're not getting paid for it, you're not having some kind of specific programming for it, I mean, I left five random teenagers in my house with my kids today, and, I mean, maybe they're learning something about the chores that I expect them to do while I'm gone, but, like...
Yes, so again, and that's subjective, and we look at, you know, what is the intensity of it? How often these things are happening? So certainly, you know, if you are paying somebody for something, that's very clear that you have hired them, you know, there is some contractual arrangement that is happening there. But if this thing is happening every single week, and it's a different group of people, you're exceeding what is the customary incidental use of a property, which is a single-family residence. And, you know, there's not, you know, I can't sit here and point of, you know, this one thing right here trips you up every single time. It's a successive amount of things, it's the frequency, it's the number, you know, and we don't deal with that very often, but occasionally it does happen where, you know, we have to say, okay, yes, ordinarily, you did this one thing three times a year, that's not drawing our attention. You know, that's not generating calls from neighbors, that's not, you know, involving us, it just happens, and it's fine. But if something is happening with such a repeated frequency or number, then we have to look at it a little bit differently and say, you know, is this customary and incidental, or is this a separate use that's, that's just not?
Okay, thank you. Round two, Councilmember Rallo?
So a lot of this seems to focus on the intensity of use of the property. So people are accustomed to residential property, having essentially, you may have a party every so often to, you know, you use the property in that way, you have a crowded people come over. But what we're proposing here is, for instance, a class coming over, maximum of eight students, depending upon the size of your property, but max eight. There aren't classes that really, there are probably very few classes that are eight students in size, so you would have consecutive visits of eight, sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-two students, I'm envisioning. You're nodding yes, so I'm, I think I'm on track.
Yeah, yes, and so there's no limitation on how many classes you can have a day, it's just the number of people at a time.
And that's where I was going with this. So then, say, okay, that class visited that last week, now this week, there's another class from a different school, and that occupies three or four days every day, and then, and so forth. So you could, so there is no maximum of frequency of students visiting, so it could extend to that, what I'm, the scenario that I'm painting. All right, so I wanted that clarification. What about value-added products? So I grow berries, I make jam, I'm going to sell them. Is that permitted?
No, so the way that the definition is written, you know, you're allowed to sell the food or the food products that are grown on the site, but, you know, turning that into something else would not be, so the value-added products, as that is commonly referred to as, would not be something that would be allowed with this use, you know, that, you know, that becomes a lot different, you know, than you're, than you're becoming more of a grocery store, or a bakery. And, you know, it's not a self-limiting thing of how much you can grow on here, but, you know, I used four blueberries from this one, and I made pies all year long, or something. So the limitations kind of go away with you, throw that value.
What about, so let's, let's just, let me just explore this a little bit. So what about compost? So I've got a compost pile, and I package it. Can I sell that? What about seeds? I grow, I grow some, you know, rare tomato, and I package the seeds, and then I, and then I sell them.
I would say that'd be allowed. I mean, that's part of the food product you're selling, yeah.
That's allowed? Okay, even though I'm, okay.
I mean, that's obviously part of, that's within the things that you're selling, so whether they're still in the plant, or, you know, you've pulled them out and sold those separately, you know, that doesn't change the fact that they were generated on that property and in and of themselves.
Well, okay, I would say, okay, I think this needs a little bit more exploring, but I'm not going to go there now. I wondered about the conditional use aspect of this. So the BZA could consider turning it down. Could they consider turning it down on the basis of citations? So you've received a lot of citations, say, in the past, for violating code, and could that be essentially used as a, sort of, an argument for turning down this use?
Well, the use shouldn't be there at all without the conditional use process happening first. So, you know, somebody would, you would have to make a correlation between a violation somehow and its impact on this use. But, I mean, there's not necessarily in the UDO, or in that language, that says, if, you know, for instance, you know, other uses have language that says, if you've received an NOV from the planning department, you are not allowed to do this use. You know, we have not included that with this language. Certainly, if the council feels that something of that nature should have incorporated, you know, it's welcome to include that as an amendment, but we, we had not included that with this ordinance.
I'm envisioning maybe some amendments coming from this, so I'm, I guess what I'll say right now is that I'm envisioning this might take more than this meeting to explore this. But that aside, two more quick questions. Does this use attach to the property or to the resident?
It runs with the property, but it could certainly be attached to a specific entity or the use that is on that property. So it can be different, I mean, it can be tied to that specific user, although typically it's not, you know, except for conditional uses. If you say a church is approved, is an appropriate use here, you know, it doesn't necessarily matter, you know, what you are worshiping in that church, a church is a church, but it could be tied to a specific entity.
And what about tax status? Do I lose my homestead exemption if I'm running a business, a farm on the property?
So that's a separate question, we're not in there. As long as you claim that as your residence, I don't, I'm not aware that you are prohibited from using your homestead exemption, but, you know, that might be a question for the assessor.
All right, thanks. I'll just quit for now.
All right, continuing in second round, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. Okay, one question I just thought of. You have sheep on the property, it's big enough, right? They are sheep, they give birth in the middle of the night in the winter, right? Can you have a class at midnight for birthing sheep within this ordinance?
I would say yes.
This feels so specific to me, and I disagree that it needs to be specific. Like, your example of a car mechanic, wouldn't you say that, you gave the example that cars would be parked outside and people might not like that? But if there are no limits on the number of classes at all, per day, per week, time of day, there could then be that many cars parked outside all the time? I mean, are you trying to say like, a car parked for 24 hours is different than a car, cars coming and going all day? I guess I feel like, I would like these answered, but, well, I'll stop there.
Yeah, so what I was referring to, I guess, were oftentimes with, historically, but this isn't an allowed use within the UDO, so I can't really point to specific situations, you know, when you've got car repair in a detached garage, they might be storing a car, or two, or three in the parking, in their driveway, and so that might have a different impact. I mean, that was just one example, I guess, of, you know, why we were saying that it can't occur outside. And like I said, we were just trying to solve the immediate problem at hand without trying to open up the door for other things.
This is, thank you, this is, just continuing on with that, this is where I just think we could have, staff could have done a small use change to allow teaching rather than create an entirely new but very specific use, that, for like grazing? I mean, okay, so we have crops and pastage, right? Where you're allowed to grow crops, graze animals, let me see, the definition, right? Sell crops, breed, manage, sell, produce from the, or producing livestock, we can do all of that. It can be an income-producing property, right? You can, you can do actually milk, butter, cheese, eggs, meat, and honey on a property already, and like, what is missing from that is just the ability to teach.
Yeah, that is, that is certainly, I guess, one good distinction between those two.
So I would like to see this instead as allowing people who have home jobs to teach. So I do think it's important that a mechanic can teach, and like, what about woodworking? Is that allowed right now, in this?
Yeah, so you can do that, so the challenge was that occurring outside of a building. That, that's the difference, you know, it's not the teaching thing, it's that it's occurring not inside the primary dwelling unit or the accessory structure. That's, that's the challenge that the definition of home occupation was presenting.
So you, so something like, something that happens outside, like swimming, you have a pond in your backyard in city, or you have a pool, can you teach swim lessons?
Not in a pool in your backyard, no.
And you could not do that under here, but you can teach, right, like, someone to like butcher a cow?
I would say probably no, if that is a class that they are paying for, and it's not occurring within a building, the definition of home occupation would not allow that.
But, but this ordinance, this use change, would allow this type of property to have a class for butchering, sorry, yeah, to have a cow, a class for butchering a cow.
Yes, with, yes, under this ordinance, you could do that. There's no limitation on what you're teaching, you know, as long as it's associated with the, well, I mean, the definition really is kind of raising crops of that nature, I mean, I hadn't really thought it at that level.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just, yeah, just asking, you could do like, right, making butter, making cheese, things like that. But I understand we're not to have like cottage businesses that, like, we're not allowed to make jam at home or anything, that's like health department level and is different. I get that, okay. I think that's, I mean, I can kind of quit for right now, but I do, I mean, I do think that, huh? I do just think that there, I mean, I don't know, as a lawyer, I don't, I think that there's a huge gray area here, and it, like, I think that we should allow more outside home teaching. I don't think it should be set to a specific use, and I think, kind of...
Is this bearing into a comment?
I want to ask what you think about this.
Okay.
It is that, just that like, because it also borders on like, why did we not do public engagement? Because like someone, don't you agree, Ms. Rallo, right? Don't you agree, somebody could be more offended with a cow on a property, even though that's already allowed, right? But a cow on a property than like someone storing a car on a property? I just think we should have engaged the public, and I think we can do it easier. What do you think?
So I, like I said, I, you know, the public engagement process was, you know, occurring during the planning commission meeting, you know, it was three months that that was happening. Yes, we certainly could have had very specific meetings for this. I don't, I don't know that we necessarily would have gleaned any more information that wasn't obtained during the planning commission meetings. You know, we heard the comments, we heard the concerns and the questions, the ordinance language was changed several times during the course of those meetings as we responded to the comments that came out. So, you know, the, the planning commission meetings were, is, I mean, that's, that's the purpose, one of the purposes of the planning commission meeting is to give a public forum for questions and answers and discussion, you know, and like I said, this, this occurred, you know, several times at planning commission meetings, and, you know, here at council. And so that's what we were describing when we had interactions with the members of the public, where, you know, we had meetings with folks, we had lots of meetings with people in the office before it even got to the planning commission. You know, we had lots of back-and-forth discussion, both email and in person, and over the phone with members of the public. So there was a lot of engagement that happened with the public specifically, and, you know, we certainly grasped the challenges that people were encountering, and so we wrote the ordinance to try to address that, you know, address how many people are on their property, because that's what zoning does. You know, we regulate intensity and land uses, and how do you balance those things?
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Asari?
Thank you. You mentioned earlier about, you sort of said in passing, what this, I'm sorry that I'm paraphrasing your statement, but you said something to the extent of, if this went to the full, you know, scale, that was, that was possible. And so sort of following on on these, on these questions, first off, what is the scale that you see as possible in this context?
Well, so the scale would be something, you know, where this happens every day, you know, and without, you know, any, you know, there's no limitations in here on number of frequency. So, you know, how do you, how do you somewhat balance the intensity of the use on the property, assuming that it happens, you know, every day, every day of the week, every day of the year? And so that's where we are approaching it from, you know, just limiting the number of people that were on the property, you know, somewhat the hours of operation, the size of the structures, you know, the scale of the uses that happen there, you know, those are the things that we tried to incorporate in the use-specific restrictions. So, you know, obviously, as you're aware enough, the council feels that there's other restrictions that should be included or imposed, you know, that you're fully empowered to add whatever additional language you might feel would be appropriate.
And would you have the same concerns with swimming to the, to the question that was asked before in terms of its scaling? Like, would you feel like you had to put a constraint on it if, if we were talking about swimming lessons in my own pool?
Well, so I think it depends, you know, with anything of, and, you know, this goes back to what I was just mentioning about zoning and regulate intensity and impacts on adjacent properties, you know, if... You know, if we were, you know, the home occupation restrictions restrict how much of your house you can use for that. So that is a size limitation that restricts the intensity in and of itself. So when you open up the outside, you've taken away that restriction of how much of a property or a building is self-limiting in terms of intensity. You know, you can only, you can only teach so many people piano at one time. You know, when you open up your entire outside for something, then it can certainly be appropriate to regulate the number of people that are on there because the size limitation has gone away. So yes, to answer your question, if this was swimming lessons, then yeah, we very well could be having a discussion of how many people per class size would be appropriate.
And then just a last question on, with, on this is that a lot of, a lot of residents have reached out to us about the concerns around our abilities to enforce any type of, any type of the mechanisms that we're putting in place to deal with, both scale, noise, et cetera. What are your thoughts on, on our ability as a city to, to enforce or regulate conditional use?
Yeah, so we, we have, you know, several staff members in our department that deal with enforcement, and they are busy on a regular basis. So we deal with enforcement activities all the time, and that happens, and that comes to our attention in a variety of ways. It could be through U reports, it could be through people that contact us directly, it could be things that staff notices on a site. And so when we, when we deal with enforcement activities, you know, we reach out to somebody and let them know, hey, you know, we, we've received a complaint, you know, you have a certain time period to bring it into compliance, otherwise, you know, fines can be assessed. And so we pursue those, and we have evidence both that is just given to us by adjacent neighbors sometimes, information that we gather ourselves, you know, anything that we can to assess whether or not a violation has occurred or is occurring, you know, we can pursue that, you know, to the best of our ability. We can, you know, have a wide range of assets to try to figure out if violations are occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the gavel over to Councilmember Piedmont Smith, because I think now might be a good time to introduce the amendment.
Yes, Councilmember Stossberg.
So I would like to move amendment one to ordinance 202532.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to the seconded. Councilmember Stossberg, please describe the amendment.
Thank you. And I hope, staff, are you ready to put my little purple line document up? Okay. So as the plan commission person, I've like been through several of these hearings already and thought about this an awful lot, which is one of the reasons why I have this amendment. As I said in the memo, that was in the addendum today. And so what was in the addendum today, which is why I want to show it, is a little different than what was in the packet on Friday. I added a few things that I didn't have time to do before the original packet went out on Friday. So there's five main things that it does. The first three were all the Friday things. One of that was changing the name from urban agriculture commercial to urban agriculture farmstead, adding a setback requirement for agricultural stands from the right-of-way, and including all of the R zones in the use-specific standards that applied to R1 through R4. And then the two things that I added in the packet this week was making changes to the permitting in the mixed-use zones and then updating the use-specific standards. And then we realized that the definition of greenhouse non-commercial also needed to be updated. So in terms of what's on the screen right now, I don't know if you can see that, but it is in the packet addendum, if you need to look at that. The first change there in purple is renaming urban agriculture commercial to urban agriculture farmstead. And one of the reasons I did that, so there were several people at the plan commission level that were really concerned about that idea of commercial operations in residential areas. And I really did feel like the commercial word didn't quite fit with the residential areas. I don't feel like farmstead necessarily fits well with the mixed-use areas, but I would rather have something that doesn't fit well with mixed-use than something that doesn't fit well with residential. And this also came from the B-CAWS group, the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability, who defined some terms, including farmstead as an accessory use. And if you actually look at kind of the details of the differences between this, I'll start calling it farmstead use, and the non-commercial use, they're really relatively small changes in terms of code and what is actually allowed. So I felt like farmstead was really a more appropriate term to use, especially for the residential districts. So that was my reasoning for changing that to farmstead. Second, if you look at the allowed use table under the mixed-use districts, I added the asterisks to some of, to all of the mixed-use zones where I left it as a permitted use. That signifies that there are use-specific standards that then would also have to apply to the mixed-use zones. And we can talk about that more later if, yeah, I'll talk about that more later. But then I also eliminated the permitted use from some of those spaces. So I took it out of the MN, which is mixed-use neighborhood, because those, we don't have very much MN, and they were specifically designed to be like neighborhood node kind of areas. And so I didn't feel like this use was necessarily appropriate in those, you know, kind of selective neighborhood, mixed-use neighborhood zones. I also took it out of the downtown, because once again, that didn't seem like it fit well. And we only have one very small parcel that is mixed-use healthcare right now. So I decided we just don't need it in there. And we don't actually have any zone, any area of the city zoned EM for employment. So I was like, why do we need to put that in there? I felt like that was just excessive. So that explains that page. If we want to scroll down to the language, once again, updating farmstead in that first line there, A1, it was, that originally was just talking about greenhouses and hoop houses being limited. And so I, I had to add in, because I had use-specific standards on the mixed-use districts, I had to add in that, okay, those greenhouse and hoop house limitations are for those R districts. And then I added in section two, for the mixed-use districts, the standards for accessory structures for that base zoning district apply to greenhouses and hoop houses. Section four down there, I added the five-foot setback from the right-of-way. And my reasoning for that was that currently, so this language originally came directly from the non-commercial use, but in that non-commercial use, you're restricted at the number of days that you can sell things a year. But in this use, you could sell things every day all year long. And so I felt like, at that point, you can have a more permanent agricultural stand and that it was appropriate to have that setback from, say, the sidewalk or the street and not have it right up on those public right-of-ways. But I didn't want to set it back 10 feet because there are some smaller properties that might only have a 10-foot setback from the sidewalk already. So setting it back five feet would make it an accessible thing for even smaller properties. Added in that section on number four about the, unless otherwise allowed in terms of fences, just to make sure if in one of the mixed-use zones, there was a greater allowance for fences, that that would still hold true in that mixed-use zone. In operational standards, number one, I added in the restrictions for residential multifamily, residential high-density, and residential mobile home, because I felt like those were all very residential districts and that those retail sales prohibitions should also be maintained in those districts and not just the R1s through R4s. And then there's also an incidence of farmstead needing to be replaced for urban. Number two, there's also a farmstead reference that had to get changed. Number four, once again, adding in those other residential zoning districts in terms of the power equipment and generators. And I also added the MS zoning district in there, because at this point, the mixed-use student district is really highly residential. And so I thought that it was important to have those more specific timed noise ordinance standards, but in other districts, the noise ordinance standards will apply, which is sunrise to sunset, or sunset to sunrise. Number five, added in that residential mobile home to the, and number six, actually, to the employee and educational classes limitations, because once again, I felt like it was important to group that residential zone with the other residential zones. That's kind of an equity issue. And then in number eight, it is specifying that the additional drive cut is only allowed in those residential zones. And then we can scroll down, I think next we go to the definitions for changes. It was kind of realized, hey, we have this definition for greenhouses, and it says greenhouse non-commercial, but really, really it's just a greenhouse, whether it's commercial or not, in terms of how it's being used in this. So it's just taking out the non-commercial out of greenhouse and just calling it an accessory or temporary structure of class. And then the urban agriculture farmstead definition, putting farmstead in two places, purposefully leaving the educational activities conducted on the property related to urban agriculture, leaving that as, as urban in there. And I think that that covers it. Any questions for me?
I forgot that I was sharing. Councilmember Asari.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Stossberg. Could you tell us a bit about, and I don't know if this is the most relevant time to ask this, but the three who voted no on the plan commission, because they haven't updated the minutes yet, and I haven't had a chance to watch the meeting. Do you know why they voted no?
Oh, boy. I, I will be honest right now and say that that was a meeting I missed due to, due to health issue. So I'm not going to remember exactly who voted no. I did watch it. The primary reasons were, I think one person just didn't think that it should be in residential, and I can't remember, maybe there were two like that. One of the interesting things about, having been on the plan commission now for, for almost two years, there have definitely been moments where things got forwarded to council, not because the plan commission thought that it was perfect or really ready to go, but that because they felt like it had been fussed with enough at that level and that it was ready to go to another level for maybe more fine-tuning fussing. And so one of the things, like the, the mixed-use stuff, when I asked Mr. Grulick about that, he was like, well, I'm not going to get into the philosophy of whether we should allow this use downtown. But I was like, well, as a council member, I can get into that in terms of philosophy, whether I think that we should allow this use downtown, and I don't think that we should, just in terms of density and space and how that works. And, and there was a community member who talked to me a lot about vertical growing. So yeah, you know, like, vertical growing could maybe work downtown, but then we would have to maybe get into some real restrictions, like only allowing vertical growing. And that, I just felt like that was a headache that I didn't want to take on. And if somebody in downtown wants to do this, then that can be a conversation later down the road in terms of writing in those extra restrictions. So, yeah, I mean, I, there was also a tie vote for continuing it to the next meeting. So there was a four-four tie, which then failed, to continue it for one more meeting. So there were definitely some people who thought that maybe at the plan commission level, they should make more changes. And then some people who were like, no, I think that we've made enough changes. There was a motion that failed to get a second to forward it to us with no recommendation. So I hope that that helps.
One super quick follow-up, just pertinent to the amendment itself. The, the emphasis of, of not being able to constrain the amount of days, that was, you added this language or no?
No, that was already there.
That was already there, okay.
That they could, that they could sell all year, that that's one of the differences between the non-commercial and the farmstead.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions about the amendment? Councilmember Rallo.
Well, this is kind of a process question. So this is a complicated topic. The plan commission was, had some ambiguity about whether to continue working on it. It now comes to us. You offered an amendment in the packet on Friday, but you've modified it. There may be other amendments coming. I don't know. I think that, you know, what I'm hearing among my colleagues, I'm wondering about if this was, if there was a motion later to continue, to postpone consideration to November 5th, how we could handle this particular motion that's on the table. Would the proper thing to do would be to withdraw it in order to consider, you know, maybe we can discuss this, but we could withdraw it at some point in order to consider potential other things. And just as a courtesy, because some of these things that were added were just added, and people living in these districts don't even, may even not, not know about it yet. So that's my question.
Mr. Stossberg, would you like to respond?
Well, I think I can respond to part of it, but maybe staff needs to respond to part of it, too. In terms of people living in those districts and things that have just changed, it was, if anything, like, my changing the mixed-use stuff actually limited it more. And so, yeah, I guess what you're saying is if somebody lives in there and they expected it to be permitted and now it's not, would they be given a chance to comment? That's a good question. I think that whether or not this passes doesn't exclude future amendments from coming. And I thought about splitting this up into multiple amendments, but at that point, if you guys remember, several meetings ago, Councilmember Flaherty amended, it was the Transportation Commission thing, Councilmember Flaherty amended the language, and then Councilmember Ruff did another, like, like repeal and replace, and then it became this really confusing bit of like, one amendment really needed to, they, they needed to be attached in a way that they weren't attached. So I just stuck it all into one, and that's why this is all one amendment and why I changed it from the one on Friday. Otherwise, it would have been a whole separate amendment.
Besides a notification, now suppose there are amendments that could be developing that would then amend this amendment that was then passed this evening? That's kind of a awkward and confusing way in which we derive the final product, it seems to me, and I'm a little wary of that.
Council Attorney Lehner, do you have any guidance on this?
I think that council could entertain a motion to postpone this main question, and then the subsidiary amendments also would be postponed as well, just with that one motion to postpone. Does that answer your question?
I thought we had to dispose of the amendment before we go to the consideration of the, of the ordinance as amended. But we could, are you saying, I mean, there's public here that want to speak. I want to make sure that they're allowed to speak on the entirety of it.
So is the question then to allow the public comment to occur tonight on the main question?
I think the question is, is it possible to postpone this amendment even though a motion has already been made for this amendment? Would it be up to the sponsor of the amendment to decide to postpone or not, or is there some way the council can weigh in?
I need to look that up. I think if the main question is postponed, then all of the amendments are thereby also postponed. But let me check in Robert's rules with respect to simply postponing the amendment itself. Is that the question?
I guess so. I mean, we, the motion of adopting the whole thing is on the table, too, and then this motion for amendment.
Which, and, and I think that main motion could be postponed, but my understanding is you'd like to receive the public comment tonight as well, correct?
I believe so.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Yeah, I mean, I would like the public to comment on this amendment as well, but depending on how council feels after receiving the comment on the amendment, if there's ambivalence, then I would probably prefer to withdraw it as it is and then have comments on the whole thing and then postpone as kind of a personal preference. But I also am totally amenable in terms of, you know, recognizing that this isn't perfect, but also recognizing that in terms of like stacking amendments, I think it's, it might be really hard to get one amendment that includes like all the things. And, and so this is a repeal and replace amendment where it just replaces attachment A. And so, you know, I'm also amenable to then an additional amendment changing this one, including the language that I changed, like, if somebody then wants to take something out, like, I mean, I think that that would be okay. So does that make sense, Councilmember Rallo? So I'm, I'm good with either. I just do want to have the public comment on the amendment, and I'd rather not vote on it and withdraw it tonight than have it fail, because people generally just aren't ready for this piece of legislation. ready for this piece of legislation.
Councilmember, sorry?
I was going to second that. I like the second option, just because, I mean, it seems that we're all gravitating in the postponement direction, so I would rather that we could quickly get to public comment, not make them, not bore them with any more procedure, and then we can reintroduce the amendment when we next take this up. Just a second, though, consideration here is that whether we should consider postponing or rather referring to a different type of gathering for us so that we can talk about this in a different way, like, for example, to a committee of a whole meeting that is at a different time, so that we don't run into the, "We postpone to next meeting and then we," you know, like, it puts all this different type of time pressure on us. So we could refer to a council of the whole and schedule a special session or something like that.
I think Councilmember Flaherty was next. No, you're good. Councilmember Daley?
I mean, we do have a deliberation session coming up with nothing. No? No, we don't.
Councilmember Stossberg?
In terms of state code, when we get something from the Plan Commission, we have to respond to it within 90 days. And if we, as council, do not respond within 90 days, then whatever the Plan Commission did at the Plan Commission level goes. So I had several people tell me that they wanted to push this off as long as they could, which means that we have the space in terms of our calendar to postpone until November 5th, but we have to act on November 5th. And I want to say that is one of the reasons why we had first reading two weeks ago, so that people had two weeks before the second reading to make considerations about this. And November 5th is two weeks away at this point. That's another two weeks, so we could, in theory, have some kind of a work session next Wednesday night if people were available, but we have to act on November 5th, or whatever the Plan Commission says goes.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. Okay, this is reminding me of the towing ordinance that we did last term, where it came to us in a form that wasn't ready for code. And like, I don't agree that we should shop this ourselves. This is a staff-led UDO change, and like, I personally, like, don't want to spend a whole work session trying to make this fit into our code. Like, I think this is a convoluted way to allow teaching on properties outside, and I think it can be way simpler. I guess, like, as an attorney, this just creates so much uncertainty, like, okay, I call up and I want, this is for Councilmember Stossberg, I call up, I want to start a farm. Do you suggest I do crops and pasture, or do you suggest I do urban agriculture?
Councilmember Rosenberg?
It was a question for Hopee. Okay, because--
Because we're talking, we're actually supposed to be addressing the amendment right now?
This is about the amendment, because the use, in the use table on her, on this amendment, I can do crops and pasture as an accessory anywhere in the city, but then if I want to teach, I can only do it some places. But then if I start as crops and pasture, I don't have to have my soil quality checked, but if I ever want to teach, I do have to have my soil quality. Like, there's a lot more regulation around urban agriculture than there is around crops and pasture, and the overlap is like 90%. So I guess I just think we're adding a use that basically exists just for the purpose of adding a teaching outside element. Yes, and my legal brain, I just like, why would I ever do urban agriculture if I can do crops and pasture?
Councilmember Stossberg?
The crops and pasture, like, I did not compare all of the uses in the use table. Like, I was looking at this one. I spoke with staff about the overlap in different places. Crops and pasture did not come up as much as, oh, I'm scrolling, orchard came up, plant nursery or greenhouse came up, crops and pasturage did not come up. So, you know, I did not read that all the way front to back. I think that Mr. Grulick might have a reason in terms of crops and pasturage, but it would take me longer than I think is useful right now to do that kind of comparison.
And I, thank you. And I mean, maybe Director Grulick can answer this, that I, like, I guess I don't understand how we would, or who decides if you're crops and pasture or urban ag, and what if you want to switch from one to the other? I mean, then farmstead says you can't have, farmstead is doing everything but livestock, but then crops and pasture, you can already have livestock all over the city.
Councilmember Rosenberg, is this specifically about the changes--
This is about the amendment.
--in the amendment?
Yes, because--
Or the changes that were already proposed without the amendment?
It is in the amendment. See, a, yeah, urban agri, it's in the use table. It's in the use table. I'm asking, why would we have different uses for urban agriculture allowances than we do for crops and pasture?
Is that something that planning staff can address?
Yes.
Yes. So crops and pasturage, you know, that's allowed as a permitted use, and that could be the only use that occurs on the property, whereas the urban ag, non-commercial, is secondary to a residence that is occurring there. So you could have both, certainly. You could have, you know, you live there, and then you have crops and pasturage, you know, if that's allowed in that district as well. And, you know, like I said, when you asked us earlier, you know, like, we never had, we don't have any, there's one property in the city that has crops and pasturage on it. And so we, and it's just crops, you know, so we don't have the situation where everyone, anyone has ever asked us, "Could I teach people on my farm how to do this or that?" Because we just don't have that.
Okay.
So we've never had to answer that question.
It's actually crops and pasturage as an accessory use everywhere except for R1. Yes, where it's permitted.
Yeah, so, you know, the R1 is the big lots.
Right.
And there's only a handful of properties that are zoned for that, and only one of those actually has, is crop. Everything else is just houses.
I mean, that's okay. It's just allowed, is the thing. I mean, the UDO allows it, right? Pigs in the city, which is kind of neat. Okay, I mean, this is just part of my point, that I don't feel like crops and pasturage was considered, and they are almost the same thing.
Yes, there, and that, that's, you're not wrong. As we were looking at, and we were trying to write language that would allow for something very specifically without having, trying to say, "Well, it's kind of like this, but it's not like that because it's a house first and foremost, and they're doing this other thing." Since we were amending the use table, we approached it from their perspective, let's just write the one thing that clearly allows what we're trying to do, you know, without trying to change something else and expand it. Let's write the one thing, and we can also write use-specific limitations that might govern what we had already kind of encountered, would be some concerns with this specific use. So by allowing it as a specific use, it allowed us to write use-specific limitations that maybe we don't want in the other situation for crops and pasturage or something else, and so we could tailor it to exactly this use.
Thank you.
I still assert that this line of questioning is really about the ordinance itself and not so much about the amendment, so let's be careful there. Councilmember Stossberg?
I also just want to add, I just kind of went through the crops and pasturage really quick and kind of compared it. The crops and pasturage doesn't conceive of a lot of things that the urban agriculture farmstead does conceive of in terms of accessory structures and, like, greenhouse standards and selling things on the property and a lot of those other pieces that go along with urban agriculture. So I do think that they're different, but there is overlap, and it, it's the kind of thing that, like, maybe it could be trimmed down, but this is, you know, debatably the right time to do that. And I was sticking very specifically, looking at this usage that is, that is the new usage, and trying to consider this language when I made the use table changes in terms of allowances.
Okay, I think we should go to the public now to comment on Amendment 1. And because the amendment has changed since Friday's packet, and it, as we've seen with the disagreement between myself and Councilmember Rosenberg, is kind of unclear, like, what comments are just on the amendment and which are on the ordinance. If any member of the public wants to comment on this amendment, I'm not going to be a stickler as to whether you're commenting specifically on the amendment or on the ordinance proposed. So let's just treat this as open public comment at this point on the question of urban agriculture. If you have the amendment in front of you and you have something specific, of course, that would be preferable. So any public comment, you can come up to the podium.
Will there be another public comment period?
I do not know if we will get another public comment period on the whole thing tonight because there's, seems to be a movement to postpone it, so please take your chance now. And you need to sign in at the podium and then state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes. And then we'll also check on Zoom after a few people here. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Stake. I teach at the law school. I teach property law and I teach land use controls. I live just outside the city limits, so technically I don't think I can be here, but I'm hoping that sometime I will be incorporated into the city limits. I did not impose, did not oppose the annexation when we had a chance before. So I guess I just want to make the comments that are sort of general, they speak to both the amendment and the original proposal. The larger the change that's involved, the more potential for disruption that there is from that change. And the disruptions we're talking about here are people's lives and homes and where they live, and they're a pretty big deal to a lot of people. People have invested, many times, almost all of their assets into their homes, and then we're talking about changing them in fairly dramatic ways. Now, the farmstead may be a less dramatic way than the, than the original proposal, which would be a good thing, but both of them have, well, in both the conversations, the topic of education has come up, and it seems that solving the problem with education reforms to the land use controls might be a better way than trying to change all the uses, the underlying uses that we have here. But I don't know whether it would, but I think it might. It might be a smaller change that would upset people less. So I worry about the people who have put their hard-earned money into this. I also worry about their neighborhoods. We've already seen one neighborhood basically be disrupted by this potential change, and we're asking for trouble, it seems to me, when we allow big changes to areas that have already been planned and big changes that are not really needed in some ways. I think this will make a minimal effect on the food supply in America. There's not going to be much difference there. And there is going to be, and there is the opportunity, for people to do all these farming activities only a couple miles away. You don't have to go far in order to be able to do all the things that people want to do. And so a commercial operation or a farmstead operation, it seems to me, is not really a needed change and will cause huge disruption to people, people's lives and to their neighborhoods. I'm also worried about the reliance on government. It really seems to me that this is going to undermine people's faith in the government. People buy into neighborhoods, they put their money in there, and they're counting on the zoning, and they're counting on these regulations, and then along come big changes, and I can't count on the government. I've got to do things for myself. I've got to take my own approach by buying into a neighborhood that already has some planning that is done through covenants and servitudes. With regard to the, can you, this be rescinded later? Probably not. There's going to be a takings problem as soon as people get invested in this. They're, you're going to run headlong into the Fifth Amendment. You're going to have that problem, so I wouldn't count on any ability to rescind any of this in the future.
That is your time, sir. Thank you.
Pardon?
That's your time.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if you will. I mean, tonight--
On the whole.
Who else would like to give a public comment? Do we have any hands raised online? We do. Okay, let's take one more here in person, and then we'll go to a Zoom participant.
Excuse me. James Glenn, and I want to go through briefly a letter that I've sent to most all of you or my wife has, but I think some of you may not have gotten it. And so I'm going to read as much as I can in two minutes and 45 seconds. We're here to express our opposition to this UDO proposal because it allows establishments in residential neighborhoods across Bloomington. We understand that the title is now Farmstead, but the, there are now significant changes and stipulations from the commercial proposal, so to repeat that, what we've said before is that we support the current urban agriculture UDO provision and thinks it supplies everything needed in our city. The inhabitants can cultivate, grow, sell, market their wares, and we think a dedicated gardening can do that within the current UDO. So we have a few comments about policies, and I'll go through as many as I can. There's no specific order of importance, but we feel that the city could, is opening itself to conflict, liability, and lawsuits about property owners' rights, as Jeff just said. Policy changes are likely to put the city at risk because they open up residential properties to a variety of business uses with very few restrictions, and how this policy would be controlled, or what, and we already had outside entities threatening to come up with legal action. Also, what was brought up earlier, what about taxation? Do they get to keep their homestead credit even though it's a business? How are the properties going to be taxed? Are they in competition with the commercial districts that are already taxed at a different way? Are they in competition with the farm store that's downtown, which I'm sure has to pay commercial property taxes? What about water use? Will they be charged a different rate? Is it irrigation taxation? We went through some water issues a few weeks ago in the council. How will the properties be managed? They allow rental plots, and how does that affect the total number of people on the property? Are they students? Are they employees? What are the limitations on that? It talks about runoff into neighboring properties, but what about runoff into streams that propagate downstream and affect other people not even associated with the property? The rules of the right-of-way, we were confused about in the amendment, why it was reduced to five feet, and we still don't understand that one. And the educational component, we talked about carbon footprint, bringing people into the--
Sir, that's your time.
--property from schools every tenant, every day would not facilitate that.
Mr. Glenn, the time is up.
I'm going to let her continue. Thank you.
So I'm Connie Cook Glenn. I'm at 1300 South Brooks, directly south of the Spear property. So I want to propose that we look at the Indiana Farm-to-School Project that is very successful in Elletsville, that children are growing food on the school properties. It's completely equitable because nobody has to drive. The carbon footprint is very low. No buses have to come to any homes. I think it's a fantastic program. It is looking at bringing organic growing on a regular basis to all of the public schools in several cities in Indiana. I'd love to see that as an alternative. I'm very concerned about 360 days of commercial or farmstead use. I just don't understand. We've been told by two city officials that there would be no enforcement. So I'm glad to hear that Eric has said the opposite tonight, but that is not what we've been told. We've also, we're concerned about it feeling like a mandate. Our block is very aware of it. I don't think that other neighborhood associations have dealt with it. Anyway, the ones that I've talked to, they know nothing about it. So we're opposed to the change. We'd really like to meet again and be able to talk about it. There are lots of other concerns that we have. One is property values. We only bought our house five years ago. As Jeff said, it's a major investment, a huge-- As Jeff said, it's a major investment, a huge, huge investment. We have one neighbor who's working three jobs to pay their mortgage. Is that really what we want to change and make the public feel like they can't trust that? I mean, I think it's it's quite an issue. Maybe property values don't occur to others, but when we look at the house across the street that has been unable to be sold, it's really, really a problem. And we understand that to be because of the neighborhood character that has already been changed. I'm going to ask you to really look at everybody's opinion and not just the the proposal that is in front of you. I also want to read a very quick thing from Deputy Mayor Knapp, which she responded to me very recently when I sent a note in asking if we could meet with her. She said, I'm very aware and sympathetic to the neighborhood response. I personally bend to the property in question. As I told the Spears at the time, the issue is not whether gardening is good or whether their organization is nonprofit. Gardening is good. Nonprofits are good. She didn't say that, my editorial. The issue is the location of the endeavor and its impact on the neighborhood. Like other city staff, I urge them to work with their neighbors and to consider locations already zoned to be suitable to their enterprise. One second. Thank you so much. Thanks for all the work that you do. It's it's we've been to several meetings. It's amazing to see your dedication. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Zoom and go to the first person with the hand raised on Zoom. Please state your name clearly for the record and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Joseph Winyia. I am a resident of the city of Bloomington and I would like to speak in general support of the proposed urban agriculture farmstead, land use, and its amendment as well. I appreciate the council members' questions and considerations, and I share your sense of importance of making the amendment as robust as possible, though I really hope that the intended goals of the amendment don't end up dying in the process. In the midst of a destabilizing climate, I would argue that it's actually very important to allow for a greater ability to grow and distribute food hyper locally and to allow for the education for others to do so as well. And I guess lastly, I'd just like to note that this amendment really precisely fulfills the city's Climate Action Plan goal FA3, which is to increase and stabilize the local food market and specifically its action item FA3A2, which is to revise zoning ordinances to remove barriers to urban agriculture. So once again, I appreciate the council's consideration and I hope that you also see the value and the necessity of the goals of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have the next person on Zoom and then we'll come back to in person. Up to three minutes and we've asked that you start by stating your name clearly.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Conkle, CEO N K L E. Like Professor Stake, I'm a professor in the law school, but I have no expertise with respect to zoning. I do have nonetheless one specific comment about the proposed amendment in that I don't know if this was in the original version, but there appears to be a discrepancy in terms of the question asked earlier by Councilmember Rollo about value added products under operational standards under the amended version. Urban agriculture farmstead operational standards, point one, is consistent with what Mr. Grulich said, basically that the exception is for the sale of produce grown on that site in an unprocessed form. Conversely, if you look at the definitional provision under urban agriculture farmstead, a few pages later, the reference on the second line of the text is to the sale of food products from food grown on the premises, which seems to be a bit broader and maybe would create the potential for selling things like jam, jelly, and whatever, which I think Mr. Grulich said was not part of the intention. My more general comment is simply that I agree with the comments of the members of council who indicated that this really was, and I would suggest should be, about outdoor educational activities and deciding what the appropriate limits on such activities ought to be rather than, for example, expanding the potential for hoop houses from 15 feet high to 20 feet high, expanding sales from 180 days to 365 days, permitting the greenhouse and hoop houses to be not just 25% of the property's space, but 50%. All of those things seem to be an expansion that could quite dramatically affect residential neighborhoods. And I don't see what the justification is for those particular aspects of the proposal. My final point would be that with respect to the BZA standards for permitting conditional uses, it seems to me remarkable, if Mr. Grulich is correct, that prior violations of city code cannot be considered with respect to an applicant for a conditional use. If that is in fact the case, then I would suggest that in the context of this proposal or otherwise, a city council ought to correct that matter and make it clear that indeed the BCA could take account of such matters. I appreciate very much all of the time and attention. I'm very impressed by how members of council have carefully looked at this and I appreciate everything you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We come back to live and in person here in council chambers. The next speaker, please.
Thank you. This is Chris Ramji again as a resident of Bloomington, not in any other capacity. Just going by the discourse tonight, I was hoping to learn something, and this has been kind of a convoluted discussion over something that's not even by right UDO limit. And one thing that I want to just make sure that anything time, anything goes through the BZA, it's a process. This is not something that anyone takes lightly that that goes into that into that process. I'm going to be here tomorrow night and I'm not looking forward to it at all. The other thing is how much we're sort of weighing in on getting the public engagement aspect of it. We heard last week at the Preservation Commission, I always say discourse meeting, but anyway, that about what those neighborhood associations, what sort of input you're getting from them and if that is really of the neighborhood and of the residents as a whole. I live in Sunny Slope. We don't have an active one. So I question how much on a conditional use UDO amendment we need to do each time we change things. We have elected officials. You are elected officials. You're getting input from your constituents and making decisions for us. Don't that don't discount that aspect of what you do. And what we count on you to do is make good educated decisions and have a philosophy that we voted for or against you, your candidacy as an elected official. So it's important to sort of realize when we go into these things that not everything can have complete public engagement over every little thing that we change in the UDO. Here's I don't take the neighbors lightly. I think these are good concerns. I don't have an opinion on this whatsoever. I'm just trying to learn what it what it constitutes, but we just need to keep that within reason because at historic preservation last week, we didn't think that was a good indicator. Those neighborhood associations were those sort of fringe people very engaged with events here in the city. So I just wanted to want to kind of get some balance here as I sit through this sort of long discussion on the UDO amendment. But I appreciate everybody's time and effort on this. It is hard. It is difficult. And as we've gone more longer on this process, more questions are being asked and I don't I don't have a way out of this any easier than any of you. So I wish you good luck.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in council chambers who would like to make a comment? Please be sure to sign in and then state your name and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, Steve Olend. I look at this from two different perspectives. One is as a former member of the Parking Commission, current member of the Transportation Commission, although I am not speaking for either commission, I'm speaking only as somebody who's had experience with them, that whenever I hear discussion about transportation with respect to an ordinance like this, especially when it comes to parking, I try to encourage decision makers and residents alike that there are tools for addressing concerns about traffic and parking. Certainly, the neighborhood parking zones that the city has had for more than 30 years have been successful at they've proven they can regulate the use of the public right of way in a neighborhood. And while those still need some adjusting, in fact, adjusted ones might be able to help in a situation like this one. But I'd also like to point out that almost 20 years ago, there was a debate in this chamber about the mere possession of chickens in 2006 and again in 2011. I remember the objections to chickens at the time. They were noisy. They were smelly. There's a threat of avian flu. But the ordinance in 2006 was as rigid as it could be. It called for hens and no roosters, a limit of five. The the hen house had to be made of sturdy materials and set back from the street. And every property owner adjacent to the petitioner had to agree to to not object to living next door to a chicken. And yet those objections still came up. It was it was fear without basis. And I wanted to bring that up now just to say, I don't hear anything different in this proposal. I hear fear of change, which I understand. But I don't think that we should be making our decisions purely on what we're afraid of, what might happen, what people are afraid are going to happen without necessarily any hard evidence to back it up. So in that spirit, I would urge you to consider is what I would just I hope you consider it in that spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back to Zoom. Is there anybody else with a hand raised online? Once you're unmuted, please start by clearly stating your name and then you will have up to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jamie Shoal. I'm a commissioner on B C O S and have created a document that's being heard now and which Councilmember Stasberg had mentioned in regards to some of the definitions that we have we pulled out and we're working on that document. So if anyone wants to tune in tune into that meeting, we'll be talking about it next session. I want to address a few different things. I had written a letter to the editor of the H T regarding the history of the Bloomington community farmer's market. And I found I've been looking for this for over a year. I found that Mayor Frank McCloskey in the 1970s, like 74, 75, had wanted to create this. It was in the height of the oil embargo during a recession, you know, a very deep recession so that community members had a location to sell plants, produce, and other goods. So it was an accepted use throughout the city to be able to grow food or other products to sell them, plants and things like that. Let's see, I have some notes here. As someone who's been attending and growing and doing things like this in UA since for a long time, but especially in the city since 2008, the terminology is a bit confusing. Crops and pasture is UA. Orchards is part of urban agriculture as well. So to have those different is is a bit confusing for the general public who are interested in this. I'm going to refer back to the Bloomington Food Policy Council. I was a founding member of that. Our first report, survey report showed that those who participate in food gardening in Bloomington are organically based, unlike the chemlons and flower gardening, which have more chemicals. I want to appreciate those who are talking about property values because I do believe aesthetics is important. We had IU many years ago, Fritz Haig of Edible Estates fame. He also has a book that's in probably still in the arts library at IU that he did not pay attention to these gardens that he installed in yards. I also wanted to mention UA rooftop growing middleway house has done that in the past. I'd like to point out that Homebase Vendors document is from 2022. So they do have some products there. The city's regulations seem to be smaller. Just wanted to thank Councilmember Stasberg and the Planning Department for addressing this issue and hoping that it can stand later. Thank you.
Your time. Anybody else online? Anybody else in council chambers want to give a comment? I see somebody coming up.
My name is Sarah Jane Hughes.
Could you pull that microphone down?
This one or this one?
Either one.
Any old one, right?
Yeah.
Got it. I had long remarks prepared. I don't think at this hour that that's the best use of your time or the people in the audience's time. I would ask you to consider very seriously, for reasons that have been raised tonight, not merely a postponement, but a denial. This really needs a lot of work. And as as Councilmember Rosenbarger has suggested, there really has been very little communication. Two hearings that happened during the summer months where not every member even of the Planning Commission was able to attend is not my idea of great community involvement. Very late, I didn't see it until I got to the room, the last changes, but even on Friday, it was hard to see. I had some so I would urge you, if you care to postpone, to think about it, do it. But I would urge you to think carefully about denying it in the window of 90 days that you have because it's not ready for prime time. I can give you a few highlights of why I think it's not ready for prime time, including the fairly carefully written changes that President Stasberg has introduced in the last few days that very few members of the public have had any opportunity to look at. So let me say that there's an issue of scale. And if any of you would care to have them, I brought pictures of me roughly five feet tall, standing next to a 15 foot currently allowed hoop house, not a 20 foot. And I've there are several of them. This one happens to be 24 feet wide, roughly 15 feet high and 94 feet long. It is not in Bloomington. I just happened to find it and stood in front of it. So here I am, standing in front of it, and it's big. In some of the pictures, you can see a reasonable sized tractor and it's dwarfed by the size of the 15 feet high and 24 feet wide. Ignore how long it the building is. So scale is one. The second is intensity. Several of you ask, how many hours a day can you teach? How many times a week can you teach? Is there ever a change? We have a very narrow street. Third is frequency, also intense. And the fourth is a sort of second story grow lights that are currently on the property that run during the winter months during in the second story. And it's very disconcerting to some of the neighbors. So if you allow this, you're inviting more intensity, more frequency in what is a R1 neighborhood. And I don't think that's appropriate as someone who lives on the block and has lived there for 37 years. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I I offer these for anyone who would care to have them.
All right, we have another member of the public wanting to comment here in council chambers.
Good evening. My name is Ellie Spear and this has passed my bedtime, so bear with me. Bloomington has long been recognized as a progressive Midwestern city that not only sets ambitious goals, but also takes action to achieve them. Tonight, you have the opportunity to begin to connect the comprehensive plan adopted seven years ago and the Climate Action Plan adopted in 2021 with the Unified Development Ordinance at the residential level. Unfortunately, in the years since those plans were adopted, no action has been taken. Unfortunately, in the years since those plans were adopted, no action has been taken to remove the urban agriculture zoning barriers identified in them. It is past time to eliminate these barriers so that residents can take every possible action to strengthen our community and advance our resiliency goals. I agree with several council members that Plan Commission should look at the home occupation definition to include outdoor use of one's property, but we have to start somewhere. So let's start with urban ag, farmstead, and let's start now. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody raise a hand on Zoom in the meantime? Okay. Please go ahead. We'll take the next person here in chambers. And be sure to remember to sign in legibly and then state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
I think the pin is missing. Oh. I forgot. I, I got it. It fell on the floor. I'm asking the City Council to please vote no on expanding options.
What is your name, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Kathy Berry. I wrote it down, yeah. My name is Kathy Berry, and I'm speaking on ordinance 2025-32. I'm asking the City Council members, please to vote no on expanding options for commercial and/or public venues in residential areas. I respect and feel that very much work and thought has been spent on developing this ordinance, but much more work and thought has been spent on the existing UDO, including a complete review and update just five years ago. The UDO from its very first draft has named uppermost goals for good stewardship of the city environment and the social and economic health of Bloomington residents. One guiding principle cited at the beginning of the current document is goal number four. I quote, "Protect the character and stability of residential, comma, institutional, business, employment, and national, natural areas," end quote. I understand the word areas to refer to zoning. The difference between residential and commercial activities is defined in the various use categories. I agree that small and often home-based businesses are vital to the economy of Bloomington. If business owners, including farmsteaders, want the advantages of working from their residence in residential areas, I think it is fair to continue to enforce the current limitation on how noticeable the business activities are to the surrounding neighbors. The existing urban agriculture, non-commercial use allows people to grow food on a large scale in residential areas. I love working outside, and I have a home garden where I grow many kinds of plants seasonally. Any gardener or farmsteader in Bloomington and Monroe County has at least four weekly farmers' markets, including year-round options. There are at least three retailers that offer options to promote and sell produce, gardening supplies, and/or plans and ideas. The UDO also provides for home occupation businesses. Key to this provision is that residential character and scale be maintained at the site of the home occupation. Since growing plants and raising small animals requires sun and earth, of course, some activity of non-commercial agriculture and farmsteading will be visible to neighbors. But I think a gardener in a residential zone who wants to engage the general public should have the same limitations as any other business. Saying this, I also want to remind all businesses that other parts of the municipal code have provisions for onsite, commercial, and public engagements through, say, a special events permit. I think the current provisions of the UDO without any form of ordinance 2025-32 will continue to allow people to teach or model home gardening or farmsteading and to freely grow as much food for themselves.
That's your time.
And their city as their inclination allows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other members of the public who would like to comment?
Hello, my name is Matthew Austin, and I work on an urban farm here in Bloomington, Indiana. There are a couple of points that I wanted to quickly make. The three and eight seems pretty arbitrary. Originally, the, the statement was one employer or volunteer and two students for every minimum plot size, which was .165. That makes a lot more sense than capping it at three and eight. Three and eight means you're going to have to have multiple classes come if you're going to teach. So it makes more sense to, to have something standardized that's based off of the size of the property because we don't want, you know, class after class after class after class. You just want to get it one and done really quickly. And then what one of the lawyers brought up earlier, I think maybe Mr. Conkle, saying there was a discrepancy between home-based products. It does seem that there is a discrepancy there. It might be run afoul of Indiana cottage industry laws here in Indiana when it comes to fermented products and jams and jellies. So that's definitely something to look into. And then when it comes to the farmstead, that, that makes a lot more sense. There's been a lot of anxiety around the commercial designation. And we definitely made comments, I, my sister Ellie Spear made multiple comments to planning and transportation that that was going to cause issues. And, and then with Jamie Scholl's help, getting those definitions through BCAWS and into your hands so you can have a much more specific designation makes a lot of sense as well. And then if you, if you were to take a GIS map of Bloomington and look at who the supporters are versus, that are supporting this amendment versus those that are not supporting this, you're going to notice that all the non-supporters are in the Covenanter neighborhood or just right around there, which is right around my sister's urban farm. And if you look at the supporters, you're going to see it's spread out through the entire city. So keep that in mind, that this is not just a Covenanter neighborhood thing, this is an entire city thing. And then the comprehensive plan, the climate action plan, all those things support exactly what we're doing. We just happen to be the first ones to break ground on that and force the issue. But this is far, this is past time to be passed, and it needs to be done. We have much bigger issues when it comes to climate change. We need more food to be grown locally. We need people to be taught. And why not do this outside the city limits? Because there's many people that don't have access to that. This is within multiple school districts, very easily accessible. It's right on a, a bus line. And we need more access to people teaching, to people growing. And yeah, that's it. Thank you very much for your time, your consideration. And please pass this, but pass it with an amendment with allowances for larger amounts of people. Thank you.
Okay, last call. Any other public comment? Are there any hands raised on Zoom? Okay, we will come back to council members. At this point, we have a motion on the table for Amendment One. Are there any comments?
Can I actually ask a question?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Did, did we get a direct staff response or input to the amendment itself? I don't believe we did, and I was just curious to hear staff perspective on the amendment.
Mr. Grillick.
Yeah, so we had worked with Councilmember Stossberg on the language in the amendment, so we, we did not have any concerns or see any challenges. You know, we've worked with her a lot on identifying any conflicts, and so it seems like, you know, what's in the amendment is, is fine with staff.
All right, any other comments on the amendment? Councilmember Stossberg?
I, I guess I said in the beginning of this that if people didn't feel ready to vote on the amendment, that I would withdraw the amendment. I was looking through Robert's rolls. I think I'd rather table the amendment if we were going to do something. But if I motioned to table, then there can be no, no, it's not debatable to table. So I guess I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues what they want at this point to do with the amendment, but also what they want to do with the whole thing. There was at least one public commenter that was basically just like, please just deny the whole thing. And really feeling like, well, it's, it's just not ready and there's not enough time to make it ready. I, I don't agree with that sentiment, but if there's a majority, you know, I, I did spend, you know, the last couple of weeks going, am I just spinning my wheels doing this amendment because is the majority of council just going to vote it down anyway? And should I bother making any changes on this right now? And so I guess I'm interested in hearing a little bit about those twin sentiments of, should, should we just table this amendment and kind of get it out of our hair right now to kind of lay the groundwork for more amendments in two weeks and an overall postponement of this whole thing? Or is the majority of council like, yeah, it's, it's not even worth postponing it because nothing you do is going to make me want to vote yes on it?
Councilmember comments? Councilmember Zulik?
Hi, thank you. I don't, I don't mind the amendment personally. I will say I do think we should, I don't think we're ready to vote on the resolution as a whole tonight, but I don't mind the amendment, and I'm curious to see what others think.
Other comments? Councilmember Ruff?
I, I sort of agree with Councilmember Zulik in maybe some slightly different angle. Whether the final product has this amendment or not, that's not what would, is likely to make me decide whether I would support the overall, you know, the overall proposal or not. So I'm, I'm happy to have a vote on it tonight. I think either way, with or without this amendment, it's not going to have a significant impact on how I feel overall.
Other comments from council members? Councilmember Flaherty?
Briefly with respect to the amendment, I'd say the exact same thing as Councilmember Ruff. I'm happy to vote on it tonight. I don't think it's material to the way I'm thinking about this ordinance as a whole. So.
I, I take a point of privilege. I, I thought that Councilmember Stossberg was trying to get a read on whether colleagues would just like to vote no on this ordinance tonight. Am I?
I was trying to get both a read on, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to table this until I know that people don't feel ready to vote on it. You know, if the majority of council members would approve the amendment, then we may as well vote on it now. But I also wanted to get a read on, on whether we should bother postponing it as a whole if a majority of council members would just deny it kind of no matter what, like regardless of the amendment. And so like what I heard so far is that the, you know, nobody objects to the amendment, so, you know, I haven't heard from a majority yet. May as well vote on the amendment at this point, based on what I've heard so far, but that doesn't address the postponement later of the whole thing, which is a different question that I don't think that anybody has quite answered.
Councilmember Rallo, did you have your hand raised previously?
There are too many moving parts here. I, I'm uncomfortable voting on an amendment. I'm uncomfortable voting on this topic. I think it needs further debate. I, I do think it needs more work. Is it appropriate to vote it down completely and then send it back to the Plan Commission? Or is it, I don't know. I mean, I think a committee of the whole might have been the process tonight, but that said, you know, we're in a regular session. So I will likely vote against the amendment, and then I will, I will offer a, a motion to postpone consideration, but I'm curious to know what my other colleagues feel about voting up or down. Thanks.
Other council member comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thanks. I plan to vote no on this because I think, I mean, I'm happy to do it. The amendment is de minimis to me because I would vote no on the legislation, and it doesn't matter to me if the amendment is in it or not. I don't think, I'm not opposed to allowing classes on properties. I'm just, I don't think this is the way to do it. So I think this is a very convoluted way. I think there is a ton of legal gray areas. I think going from no classes to unlimited all times of the day is also the wrong approach. I think only limiting it to one type of property is the wrong approach. We're going to come back and do this again with swim lessons, you know? Like, I, I think this is not right. I think looking at home occupation and allowing outside teaching or just allowing outside teaching somewhere else on our residential lots is the way to go.
Any other council member comment?
I will just say that I, I think I, I agree with Councilmembers Ruff and Flaherty that I could vote on this amendment. I have no problems with this amendment. But I do have issues with the ordinance, but I'm not ready to vote no on the ordinance. I think it, maybe it can be saved.
So there you have our input, for most of us anyway, unless other council members want to. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, just to say that I think process is important, and I really appreciate Councilmember, Council President Stossberg's work on this. Clearly, she's considered it very, very intensely. The problem I see with it is that it came very late, and there are still people who may have wanted to speak to it, but we're denying that opportunity by voting for it. So that gives me a lot of trepidation. Whether I think it's good or not, I'm uncomfortable with that process. Thanks.
Councilmember Stossberg?
I think that I just heard that a majority would, would approve the amendment, and I think that it would honestly be easier going into a postponement two weeks from now, having this base change, even if the current changes end up being changed again in terms of a future amendment. So I guess that means I want to call the question on the amendment.
Are there any final comments on the amendment? Deputy Clerk Stole, could you please call the roll on Amendment One to Ordinance
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No.
Asari?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
All right, that passes with a vote of five to three. Now I will hand the gavel back to Councilmember Stossberg as president.
Okay, thank you. So now we're talking about this ordinance as amended. Councilmember Piedmont Smith did kind of an open public comment before that invited comments not just on the amendment, but also on the ordinance as a whole. So at this point, I guess I would like to entertain council members again for questions or comments or motions regarding this amendment, or regarding this ordinance as amended. Councilmember Asari?
Motion to postpone to our next regular session.
Second.
All right, I would like to clarify that motion, that our next regular session is November 5th. Are there, we, we are in a motion to postpone, allowed to have a debate about that. So would anybody like to speak about that motion to postpone? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
The only thing I would say is we postponed Stadium District also to that day, so I don't know how much is going on. I think that's a sticky topic, too. So I don't know if it makes sense to do all of it in one night, or this would have to be like tabled with the intent to bring back in, after, in the next session, I think. So I just want to put that out there. That would be a very long night. Or we would vote tonight, I guess.
I'll, I'll address that while I'm looking at the schedule. When we were in our, our scheduling meeting this week, honestly, I've assumed a third reading on this particular one. We've kind of assumed that all along in terms of scheduling, and we also assumed that, that Stadium District would be next week as well. So currently, next week, there is just that second reading on the Title II amendment that we had the first reading on tonight. So that was accounted for in the scheduling. Are there other comments related to postponement? Then will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to postpone Ordinance 2025-32 as amended?
Councilmember Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Then will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to postpone Ordinance 2025-32 as amended?
Councilmember Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Rosenberg? No. That passes with a vote of seven to one.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith got so used to being president again, that was pretty hilarious. That passes with a vote of seven to one. Thank you guys so much. Thank you to the many community members, both on Zoom and in the room, who have contributed to this, and also to the several members who've contributed to Plan Commission meeting comments as we went along and submitted written comments, because there have been several of them. Moving on with our agenda, we are now in the period of additional public comments. So this is another section set aside for the public to comment on items not on the agenda. And if you commented at the first not-on-the-agenda item, then you cannot comment on the second one. But if there's any members of the public who would like to comment now on items not on the agenda, if you are in the room, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab. I do see one person at the podium in chambers, so I see that you signed in. Go ahead and state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Matthew Austin. I just want to talk about food fermentation. It is the best way to take care of your food waste, and Garden Quest has free workshops at the Bloomington Community Orchard. The next one is November 4th from 1:00 to 2:30. And, yeah, so please come join and learn how to be fully responsible for your food waste to turn it into a soil amendment and a liquid fertilizer. And you can also check the Facebook page of the Bloomington Community Orchard to see additional dates. Thank you.
Thank you for that announcement. Are there any other, go ahead and make your way to the, to the podium and sign in, and then you can state your name for the record.
I've already signed in. My, would you like me to do it again?
Yes, please.
Well, there's no writing implement.
Oh, dear.
Oh, it is, indeed. Thank you.
I don't know why that keeps on falling on the ground tonight.
I can drop it three more times.
I think, I think we need a better pen keeper over there.
Thank you very much. So my name is Sarah Jane Hughes, and I would like, despite the fiscal issue, to ask whether it would be possible to get on the streets Maxwell, no, First Street and on East Covenanter and the block near where I live, the bumps, the traffic bumps repainted, because I noticed that the paint is very shallow in intensity, and so people could do their cars or their bicycling damage be thrown off if they hit it too hard and didn't realize it was there. So if it needs to be on an agenda for any moment, I think this is a moment to, to attend to it before the real bicycle season starts again in the spring. It'll give us a lot of opportunity to do something that would be really nice for the many non-car constituents in town. I love riding my bicycle. I don't get to do it very often, but I, I applaud those who do like to ride bicycles. Thank you, and thank you for everything tonight.
Thank you. I, I do want to state that council isn't really in control of that schedule, but I would encourage you to submit a U report, and if you don't know what that is, talk to us after. Yep, thank you. Are there any other comments in chambers? Has anyone raised a hand on Zoom? All right, seen no more public comment. That, that was around First Street and Covenanter, like, First Street and Covenanter. Oh, and Maxwell. Well, it's all the ones that are through Covenanter, though, right? Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, so if there is no other public comment, we will move on to notes on council schedule. So as already has been mentioned, our next regular session is on November 5th, and that is two weeks from tonight. So we do not have a meeting next week for, it feels like the first Wednesday in a long time. I have not had to be in the seat. And I also want to highlight our next deliberation session on November 12th, which is kind of a follow-up to the deliberation session that was in September about UDO changes and conversations with the Planning Department. So council members, once again, there will be some amount of facilitation and small group facilitation, so please be prepared for that and let me know as soon as possible if you're not able to attend that meeting in person. Are there any other notes on council schedule? Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Piedmont Smith?
Yes, the Special Fiscal Committee of the Council will meet tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. in the McCloskey Room.
Thank you. Any other notes on council schedule? Wonderful, we are adjourned.